Okay, good morning. I'd like to welcome all of you to a regular board meeting of San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, March the 28th, 2017. And would you all please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, every single and every [inaudible].
Roll call.
Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Groom?
Present.
Supervisor Slocum?
Here.
Supervisor Canepa?
Here.
President Horsley?
Here.
Public comment?
Public comment is reserved for persons wishing to address the board on any county-related matters that are not otherwise on this meeting agenda or listed on the consent agenda. Speakers are customary limited to two minutes, but an extension can be provided to you at the discretion of the board president. Mr. President, we have nine speakers. First is Martin Fox, followed by William Henshaw.
Good morning, everyone. I'm the board, my fellow veterans, Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Maltby, and County Council Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. Please honor the founding member of the Sheriff's psychiatric emergency response team known as PERT, Detective James Kaufman, by approving Agenda Item Number 22 and authorizing the expansion of PERT's operations throughout all the cities in the county, as well as the unincorporated areas on a 24/7 basis. Serious mental illness recognizes no artificial geographic boundaries or the distinction between business and non-business hours. Our Sheriff's Department PERT unit has a track record of success providing tactical support to law enforcement officers in the unincorporated areas and those cities within the means of its limited staff and operational resources. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Mental Evaluation Team, a similar organization, enjoyed similar success until its Board of Supervisors woke up and unanimously approved a $4.7 million appropriation to more than double the team's staff and fund operations throughout many of its cities, as well as the county's unincorporated areas on a 24/7 basis. Now, our local law enforcement officers who engage with persons living with serious mental illness are without the mental health resources needed by the cities and unincorporated communities after business hours and during evenings and on weekends unless by special appointment. By authorizing the expansion of PERT's operations throughout all of the cities of the county, as well as unincorporated areas on a 24/7 basis, you would truly honor Detective Kaufman's dedicated service to protecting everyone from the adverse consequences of untreated serious mental illness, including the very persons themselves who live with it, their family members, and our law enforcement professionals. Thank you.
Detective Kaufman is in the back smiling as you've extolled his virtues.
The next speaker is William Henshaw, followed by Yoshi Hill.
Morning. My subject matter is redress of grievance, and there does not appear to be any in sight. You have in front of you copies of correspondence from me to the clerk of court on the 17th of this February, sending in a complaint that I have not heard back from. It hasn't been filed. It hasn't even been acknowledged. You have an exemplar of my communication to the Board of Supervisors and a lot of other people here over the course of the last six months, explaining the jurisdiction and venue I'm invoking. It's nowhere in sight, yet it's mandated by the Constitution. The Supreme Court recognizes it, and leading authorities on the Constitution recognize it, and I don't understand what is going on here. I'd be much obliged if somebody could explain it to me on the record so I get with the program here and know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
No comments.
Our next speaker is Yoshi Hill, followed by Meredith Rupp.
Thank you for this opportunity to express my views. My name is Yoshi Hill, and I am a stakeholder in the mental health community in San Mateo County, and I'm a mental health peer with lived experience of the challenges that come along with the diagnosis of mental illness. And I would like to urge you to use Measure K funding to support affordable housing for our community in San Mateo County. There's an urgent need for this. Recently, I went to a meeting for Prop 6 funding in San Mateo County, and a big win for our county was five units. That is so inadequate. Now, people who are homeless, that's 24% of them, according to our latest census, suffer from mental illness, and I can tell you from having been in the system, I was homeless, I lived in a shelter, I lived in a group home, and what has made a difference in my life in becoming a productive member of society and working toward mental health is having stable, permanent housing. I was lucky enough to be part of New Ventures at Caminar, and they provided me with an apartment where I live with my husband, and that gave me a place and some roots where I could focus on my mental wellness instead of just worrying about survival every day. At this meeting, as I spoke, where the five units was brought up, there was such an outcry, "What? That's all?" This is an urgent, urgent need among my peers in this county, and so I urge you to do all you can, supervisors, to use Measure K funds if possible to support this housing need in San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Our next speaker is Meredith Rupp, followed by Berta Scholz.
Good morning, supervisors. Thank you for your service and your allowing me the opportunity to address you this morning. My name is Meredith Rupp. I am a graduate student of international policy and development, and I'm fulfilling my graduation requirements as an intern at Green Belt Alliance this semester. Green Belt Alliance works to make sure the right development happens in the right places. I chose this internship because it matches my personal and professional goals, and also because it allowed me the opportunity to start a network and a career in this diverse, beautiful place. However, housing is a major deterrent to continuing my career here. The funding I was fortunate enough to win for my school only covered, well, less than two months of rent for a small room in a messy house with strangers. It's not just a quality-of-life issue, but an environmental one as well, as the lack of affordable housing near jobs and transit forces people into long commutes, emitting CO2, and puts sprawl development pressure on our natural and agricultural lands that are key. Thank you for recognizing this problem and making a commitment to the voters to financially support affordable housing. I echo the last speaker and ask you to allocate $30 million for construction of affordable housing per year. I make this request in light of the incredible demand for housing in this region and the need to sustain our economic growth in the Bay Area. I'd like to remind you of the messaging that resonated with voters' last election, that your constituents realize the need for more housing and that this issue affects everything and everyone. It means more livable, thriving communities for everyone. Please allocate more Measure K funds for affordable housing. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thanks. Our next speaker is Berta Scholz, followed by Kate Comfort-Harr.
Good morning, supervisors. Thank you so much for giving my son and I an opportunity to speak this morning. I am here also on the same topic of housing. As you all know, the current housing situation is in crisis. We're currently, we have 50, in 2014, or between 2010, 2014, these are not new statistics to you, we had 54,000, or over 54,000 new jobs with 2,100 new housing units. It's not only the lack of housing stock, it's also the lack of affordable housing. We have, rents are skyrocketing, and unfortunately, right now, governments are not willing to help in that regard, as far as putting a stop to the skyrocketing rents, so we need to come up with alternative solutions for now that will help to serve our community with the housing stock. We have teachers, firefighters, restaurant workers, healthcare workers, all very important people to our community are being forced out. A recent story in Belmont, a teacher was, eventually had to leave her school because she was getting tired of living in her car, which was the only place that she could afford. So this exodus of critical workers will continue to negatively impact our community and impact our children, especially the education that they're receiving, the safety that we are used to will all not be there anymore if we continue to let our housing crisis continue. So I too am here to request that you use Measure K funds to both have, to both create new affordable housing and also to buy buildings, to ensure that older buildings and help with renovation, to ensure that these are not taken over by developers for expensive housing. In reality, we're getting, giving the housing crisis a lot of lip service, but now's the time for action, and I think Measure K funds is the opportunity to do so, as the voters did also state back in November. So I'm here to just encourage you to please use Measure K funds for the housing crisis. Thank you so much. Thank you. We thank you.
Our next speaker is Kate Comfort-Harr, followed by Evelyn Stivers.
Good morning. I am Kate Comfort-Harr, Executive Director of Hip Housing. My comments are a little bit different this morning. Hip Housing is a local nonprofit that provides affordable housing solutions to 1,400 low-income San Mateo residents, or San Mateo County residents each year. Last week, I attended the county's CDBG funding hearing and witnessed something pretty remarkable. CDBG, for those of you who don't know, is the Community Development Block Grant Program that's administered by HUD. It's a program designed to prevent blight and address the urgent threats to the health and safety in our communities. It's a program, the CDBG funds are passed to qualifying local municipalities who can then fund vetted programs and agencies to provide the services that we need in our community. Sadly, the CDBG program is targeted for complete elimination in the newly proposed federal budget. But last week, the county's Housing and Community Development Department went to the drawing board to find a way to fund important programs, like our housing programs, for next year despite the pending elimination of CDBG. While this is not a sustainable solution for the loss of CDBG in the long run, it does really showcase the commitment of this county to serve its residents. So I am grateful to live and work in San Mateo County, where we have great leadership and the resources for us to get our work done. On behalf of Hip Housing, our board, our staff, our clients, I want to thank the county staff and leadership for finding a way to make next year's CDBG grant budget work. I also want to encourage us to fight hard for the CDBG grant program. Don't let it get eliminated. Without it, affordable housing programs like those of Hip Housing will suffer, as will so many other vital programs that serve our low-income residents. Our economy may have turned around, but our housing crisis continues. The CDBG program, along with our own Measure K funds, are key to helping to alleviate this crisis. I want to thank you for your leadership and the resolve that you've shown towards affordable housing programs. I really appreciate it, and so does our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Evelyn Stivers, followed by William White.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this morning. I too, I work with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and their leaders to create and preserve quality affordable homes, and I too am here to support funding from, large allocation from Measure K. As you know, San Mateo County lost 76% of our housing funding in the last five years. We've lost state and federal funding. That is poised to get much worse with the new budget that was issued from the administration. But San Mateo communities and individual cities are really stepping up. We have, all but five have adopted impact fees. School districts are looking at sites, and we have 750 homes in the pipeline, and that's really from the great leadership that we have in this area. Unfortunately, we don't have enough money to fund all of those projects. An allocation, we have about $30 million of need for new construction right now, and I know if we can meet that need, we can keep that pipeline going. We have about 22,000 affordable homes that we need to build, and I know we cannot do that in a year or two. That sounds overwhelming, but by, if we can get that up to 1,000 units a year, we can really have chisel away at this, at our deficit. I really want to thank you for your leadership, both on Measure K and on housing issues generally. Thank you for all that you do for the county, and I look forward to finding solutions with you.
Our next speaker is William White, followed by Paul Fessinger.
My name is William White. I'm with United Way of the Bay Area. I'm very happy to be here today to speak in favor of affordable housing. Now, we at United Way of the Bay Area have been working throughout the eight counties here to help people reach economic success, and one of the ways we do that is through our Spark Point Financial Education Centers, which provide credit counseling, financial planning, job search services, to help people meet self-sufficiency. But unfortunately, the extremely high cost of housing here in our region often prevents many of our clients from being able to do that. Here in San Mateo County, one of our Spark Point Centers is housed at Skyline College, working primarily with students that are both working and studying to make a better lives for themselves. Now, having conducted some interviews with our students over the last couple of years, what we're finding is that finding and staying in affordable housing is one of their highest barriers to getting ahead. After talking to some of our students, we found that 44% or almost half of them are living or staying with family and friends, simply because they can't find an affordable place to live. There's another 41% of them are renting, and of those folks that are renting, they're spending on average 59% of their monthly income just on rent. So with a rent burden that high, it makes it extremely difficult for these students to get ahead, and often it could mean the difference between pursuing your educational goals and working more hours just so you can pay the rent. So we at United Way are very proud of the leadership and the commitment that this board has shown to addressing this issue, and you know, the voters were very clear last year. They want more of their Measure K funds to go toward the development of affordable housing. So we strongly urge you to make that investment and put this county back on the track toward being an affordable place for working families to live. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Fessinger, followed by Gary Johnson.
My name's Paul Fessinger. I'm a member of the Housing Leadership Council. I'm also a resident of El Granada, and I also wanted to express my support for using the money from Measure K for affordable housing. I was somebody who participated in the Yes on K campaign, and when we went to people, when we, in fact, early on, when we did training about outreach for Measure K, it was our understanding, and we appreciate the fact that it was the board here who was really a driving force behind that measure. People understood that, activists, participants, and we went around and talked to citizens. It was their understanding that that was what Measure K was all about. It was about affordable housing and that the board was behind it. And what I wanted to just add, for my two cents about this, was to thank you for that leadership and to remind you that we need to stay the course and continue that process and allocate $30 million a year for affordable housing out of those funds. You've heard about the need. You, of course, understand about that need, even though it is a great need, it's an important step that we need to take forward, and we appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
Our last speaker is Gary Johnson.
Good morning, Honorable Board of Supervisors. My name is Gary Johnson. I live in Redwood City. I'm here to express my support for you to allocate Measure K funds to affordable housing. I'm a partner at a housing development firm with projects in Redwood City and up and down the peninsula. We recently finished a housing project, community, here in Redwood City with market-rate housing as well as affordable units. It's the only project recently committed, completed within the downtown precise plan that provided affordable units at the low level. I'm concerned about affordable housing. It affects so many people that I know and that our community relies on. My two older sons attend Selby Lane School. They're in the Spanish immersion program there, and on a recent field trip, I was speaking to my son's kindergarten teacher, and she was talking to me about how difficult it is for her to commute from the East Bay every day, and she arrives tired at school and she has to fight the traffic going back, and I thought, wow, what a, what a sad story, you know, that our teachers come exhausted to school after just being in traffic for hours during the day, and they deserve to work and live, live close to where they work. And so I'm here to urge you to allocate Measure K funds for, to affordable housing. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more speaker, Mr. President. That's Regina Islas.
Good morning. Thank you. I appreciate being here. I'm just going to get right to the point. I'm a constituent in this county, and I see the needs for affordable housing all over. In particular, I work with seniors throughout San Mateo County, and the voters have been very clear, we want the $30 million allocated, and I think it's time to do it. We need it now. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to mention Supervisor Groom sent, received a letter from Louise Perkins. I will enter that in the minute, and she just wanted her name in there, and no more public comment.
Okay.
May I ask a question through the, through the chair?
Sure.
We are, you know, today, of course, heard a lot of testimony about how to allocate Measure K, and other stakeholders are asking those questions, and I'm a little unclear through the chair, you know, when, I mean, I think it's important that, you know, we as a board, relatively soon, you know, look at that 85 million and make those high-level decisions. I'm not clear whether, when we're going to do that, or whether it's just going to all get folded into the budget.
I didn't, I didn't know it was 85 million, but...
The, you know, the normal measure.
Through, through the present to supervisor, I believe it's April that the Measure K budget will come back to the board. As you know, the voters voted to extend Measure A, which is now Measure K. There's no new funds involved in that, and so the trade-offs the board will have to make, since it's already allocated in past years, the roughly $80 million of funding that's available, as to if you're going to increase funding for one area, what areas are you going to decrease funding for, because it's a zero-sum game.
So, do you know which meeting in April that is?
I think it's the second meeting, if I recall correctly.
Okay, because, I mean, that's, that's a hard policy question that we just have to agendize and discuss.
Well, thanks for pointing it out, Supervisor Pine. We actually have, as you know, we've put about 60 million into housing so far, have Supervisor Slocum and I had that job housing gap task force, and we're still talking about home for all. One of the things, I really appreciate all the people coming here to support housing. Sometimes when we have a proposal in a particular area, we find the people who are the neighbors actually fight them, so it'd be really nice for you to, you know, sometimes stand up also, and I'm sure you will, to make sure that you get, we have some support when we're trying to build affordable housing and we end up with some pretty stiff opposition, especially on the coast side. So, again, thanks, all of your comments. We do appreciate it. We certainly take them into consideration when we make decisions in the future. So now, we're going to go on to setting the agenda and to potentially approving the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would make the motion that we set the agenda and approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, if I can make this one comment?
Sure.
You know, Jim Kaufman was called out by Marty Fox, and I just want to take a moment, since it was on the consent calendar, to also express my, you know, appreciation for the incredible work he's done in this, in this county. You know, I've gotten to know Jim through my work on the Mental Health Board, and, you know, what he has done, the transform law enforcement's thoughts and procedures and processes for dealing with the mental ill is just stellar. All right, he's, you, Jim, you've been one of the, you know, leaders in the state, and our county has gone so far in improving the interaction between law enforcement and mental health, which we know is a really intense one and a really difficult one, and the trainings you have led and the leadership you have shown, I mean, it has literally saved people's lives, and I just wanted to make a special recognition to Jim.
And he was, he was also honored by NAMI for his work, so thanks for your work, Jim. I really appreciate that. We'll now go on to our presentation and awards, and the first one is a presentation of a proclamation designated April 2nd through 8th as a National Crime Victims Rights Week. Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have before us a proclamation designating the week of April 2nd through the 8th as the National Crime Victims Rights Week, and I would make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Every year, as we've heard in years past, Americans are the victims of more than 20 million, 20 million crimes, and through those crimes, people have their lives changed forever. Those victims are our family members, our neighbors, our friends, and our colleagues. So every year, just to repeat, 20 million Americans are experiencing crime. At the local level, the DA's office has had contact with over 5,189, that's 5,189 new 1,331 of those victims were involved in domestic violence cases. That's a 34% increase over 2015. 561 victims were as a result of assault and battery, which is a 14% increase. 840 were victims of sexual assault that involved tragically adults and children. That was a 44% increase over the year of 2015. Compensation claims, victims can actually claim compensation through a process, were filed by the District Attorney's Office in approximately 521 cases, which is a 31% increase over 2015. Also, the District Attorney's Office provided resource and referral assistance to some 4,900 victims in San Mateo County. So I think those statistics speak for themselves. They're staggering, and I would ask that Karen Guidati and Steve Wagstaff, the District Attorney, and I believe Becky Aridano come up and receive this proclamation, and perhaps we could encourage them to say a few words on behalf of crime victims in San Mateo County. I don't know if the District Attorney, there he is, back there in the corner. There.
I was having trouble with my monitor. I went off, and I was feeling...
I had to turn it back on. District Attorney said he couldn't just say a few words.
And it is going to be a long meeting, so thank you.
So I'm going to say those few words. So, good morning, Honorable Board of Supervisor members and Mr. Maltby. On the behalf of our Victim Services Division, I am once again honored to receive this proclamation designating the week from April 2nd through the 8th as a 2017 National Crime Victims Rights Week. For those of you who may not know me, my name's Becky Aridondo, and I'm the Victim Services Manager with the San Mateo County District Attorney's Office. As most of you know, the National Crime Victims Rights Week is an annual observance to bring communities together and educate the public about victims' rights, protections, as well as services. National Crime Victims Rights Week provides us with an opportunity to commemorate and honor crime victims, celebrate their courage, and acknowledge their struggle for justice. Furthermore, National Crime Victims Rights Week affords us with an occasion to honor all the service providers who render outstanding services to crime victims. The 2000 theme, "Strength, Resilience, Justice," reflects the vision of the future, one in which all victims are strengthened by the response they receive, organizations are resilient to face challenges, and communities we serve are able to seek collective justice and healing. The theme highlights the need for multiple avenues of victim support. The theme highlights the need for multiple avenues of victim support. White spread and fundamental justice in our communities must include victim-centered, trauma-informed, culturally competent services for all victims of crime. Collaboration is critical. Fortunately, in San Mateo County, we have developed cooperative environments in which creative solutions have been spurred to provide comprehensive, informed responses to victims of all crime types by bringing together victim service providers, law enforcement, criminal justice professionals, and key community leaders. I want to remind all of you that sadly only 30 years ago, crime victims had virtually no rights and no assistance. Fortunately, our victims' rights advocates have scored remarkable victories over the last three decades. We have come a long way, and today, the nation has made dramatic progress in securing rights, protections, and services for victims. Every state has enacted crime victims' rights laws, and all states have established victim compensation programs. More than 10,000 victim service agencies now help victims throughout the nation. 30 years ago, in 1984, Congress passed the Bipartisan Victims of Crime Act, more commonly known as VOKA. VOKA created a national fund to ease victims' suffering. VOKA is financed not by taxpayers but by fines and penalties paid by crime offenders. As we move forward, we are increasingly expanding our services to previously underserved victim populations such as victims of color, victims of elder abuse, LGBTQ victims, as well as human labor and sex trafficking victims. In fact, in 2015, we provided assistance to approximately 3,800 new victims. Last year, in 2016, through all of the incredible work of our victim advocates, we provided assistance to approximately 5,200 new victims. Therefore, based on these numbers, 1,400 additional new victims were served in 2016 compared to 2015. In 2016, approximately 1,300 were victims of domestic violence, over 840 were adult and children, sexual assault victims, and our advocates, there were slightly over 560 were victims of assault and battery. Our advocates provided resource and referral assistance to approximately 4,950 victims, and our victim advocates filed compensation claims for payment of crime-related expenses for slightly over 520 victims. Furthermore, our victim service employees spread the word about the services we provide to approximately 2,660 individuals in San Mateo County through their efforts of conducting presentations and participating in community outreach events. On this note, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge our San Mateo County's victim services employees who work day in and day out to assist numerous victims of violent crimes in our county. For the Victim Services Division employees that could join us, I would like to request that you please raise your hand or stand so you can receive proper acknowledgement today. I would like to close by stating that our Victim Services Division is extremely appreciative of the never-ending support that our Board of Supervisors and our county manager provide. Thank you for your time this morning, and thank you once again for this proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Arredondo. We just have one speaker on this, Martin Fox.
Good morning again, President Horsley and honorable members of the board. Thank you for your service to the county. And thank you for honoring and acknowledging the current courage of crime victims by voting to approve this proclamation, even though persons who limit or deny treatment to persons living with serious mental illness have immunity from civil responsibility and criminal prosecution under the intellectually and morally bankrupt Landerman-Petras Short Act. As the proclamation states, crime can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status, and so can serious mental illness. As the proclamation also states, a trauma-informed response to victims promotes healing and strengthens survivors with the hope for a better future. Make this proclamation even more meaningful for courageous crime victims next year, and express trust in our District Attorney and his judgment by waiving the immunity from criminal prosecution that the Landerman-Petras Short Act provides to persons who limit or deny treatment to those living with serious mental illness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Going to the next presentation, it's a presentation awards to jury winners of the 2017 Women's View Art Exhibit. Supervisor Carol Grum.
Thank you, Mr. Horsley, Mr. President Horsley. This is a continuation of Women's History Month that we have, that we celebrated a little bit a couple of weeks ago. And I hope that all of you have been able to be out in the hallway and see the wonderful paintings, both upstairs and downstairs, that have been submitted by really talented women in our county. We had over 80 entries, and it's a joint project of the Commission on the Status of Women and the County Arts Commission. And so I'd like to thank all of the volunteers who serve on those commissions for working so hard to make this once again a great, great show. We have good support from Rosio Kirzan and others who helped put this show together. I'd like to thank also Mary Hofstedt and Boris Kudrin, who helped curate the exhibit and helped display it. And again, I encourage all of you to take a look. It'll be up all during, it's been up during the month of March, it'll be continuing to be up during the month of April. So now I'd like to introduce you to some of the award winners. There is a $100 check for the three of the award winners, and that is Mary Ann Shosbo, who did an oil painting called "Deep Blue," Karen Chu, who did a mixed media painting entitled "Entangled," and Nanette Nemenzo did a mixed media painting entitled "Bell." And we have three honorable mention winners. Kathy Cakebride, who did a pigment print entitled "Tea Time," Dawn Harmer, who did a photograph on metal entitled "Weathered Hands," and Susie Castoria, a photograph entitled "Nature at Rest." So I would like to ask all of you to come up and receive your awards and be recognized. high.
Thank you. Did we pass that proclamation? Did we pass the proclamation?
No, these were just announcing.
Oh, okay, no, Smith, it's not a proclamation. Okay, got it.
You were right to ask, because I always forget.
This, the next one is a, this is a proclamation designating March as April Red Cross Month. And it's my pleasure to make that presentation. I actually kind of looked something up about the American Red Cross and when it was founded. It was founded by Clara Barton, and she was, she actually started during the Civil War. She worked for the U.S. Patent Office, and she knew all the soldiers because she was in Washington, D.C., and she considered them her boys, and she actually took wagons into the front line. She actually went to like the Battle of Antena, which was probably one of the most devastating battles of the Civil War. And she later, and then she founded the Red Cross, and she did some really remarkable things like, in the 1890s, she actually went to Russia, was suffering from a massive famine, and she brought 500 railroad cars of Iowa cornmeal for that famine. And then there was a big hurricane in South Carolina, left about 5,000 people dead, and she labor for about 10 months, helping, it was really a predominantly African-American population to recover and reestablish their agricultural economy. And having been in the Sheriff's Department for a number of, about 35 years, and worked on a number of local disasters and even smaller events, the Red Cross was always there for us, always helping us. It's really a fabulous organization and one that certainly richly deserves the honor today. And the other is, accepting the proclamation is, and I better remember to actually make a motion to approve it, is Jim Holly. He's an active Red Cross volunteer, actually for over four years. He's active in disaster preparation and response and recovery, and he's involved in really the community at large, really to say the least. He's given shelter training, taught and organized the ham radio clubs and associations on the coast side, and rejuvenated the relationships throughout the coast from the north to the south. And the coast side is sort of a unique in a sense that, in the event of a major disaster, they would probably end up being cut off, and so they really have to be able to be self-sustaining. So he's, Mr. Holly's been really instrumental in preparing and creating a cohesive group of volunteers, coupled with the cities and the county jurisdictions over on the coast side, and he really is a shining star of the, what I consider, you know, the, a very special part of San Mateo County. So, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
For the American Red Cross Month. Okay, we have, second? Okay. We don't, you were the second. I made the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And at the same time, we're going to be giving Jim Holly accommodation for his work on the coast side, so, Jim? Would you join me up?
President Horsley and members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you very much for the proclamation, and thank you very much for the individual awards. So, just like Ms. Barton some years ago, we're still very, very busy, and the Red Cross on a nationwide basis has been quite busy this year, especially with storm-related, weather-related activities. And, you know, our mission is to prevent and alleviate suffering, and we've done quite a bit of that, San Mateo County as well, especially with the storms. We've had quite a bit of activity here in our normal allocation of fires that we get quite frequently. In addition, you should know that our volunteers serve other counties as well on a as-needed basis. We're up to ghost ship, certainly. The recent fire in Chinatown, we were working the shelters in San Jose, working down in Santa Cruz, and also Monterey Counties as well. Now, in terms of this individual proclamation or this individual commendation that you give me, I'm certainly pleased and appreciate it, and I want to accept it on behalf of the many, many volunteers in this county. On the coast side alone, our CEC Corps is something like 130 people, medical people, ham radio operators, CERT members. We have CERT members throughout the county, in all of our cities, and there are just many, many other folks that are contributing to disaster response in this county that are volunteers. So, thank you so much. I really appreciate both of these things.
Thanks for the work that you do, Jim. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to recognize and introduce John Woodall, who's in the audience. And I know through talking him, talking with him through the past couple of years, that he's been deeply involved in the American Red Cross, and I just wanted to recognize him. If you want to stand up, John? Thank you.
John Woodall, I'm the Vice Chair of the San Mateo County Red Cross Leadership Council, and I'm also on the Government Relations Committee for the Bay Area Chapter. And I just want to thank the board for recognizing Jim Holly, and also let everyone know that the Red Cross is not only just involved in disaster for fire and flood, as people have seen, they also have been involved recently in San Mateo County installing smoke detectors and in East Palo Alto, Redwood City, and parts of Menlo Park, partnering with the Fire Department. So people who want to get involved in that should definitely go to redcross.org, and they can volunteer in disaster or also going in and installing smoke detectors. And lastly, definitely, we have a need for blood ongoing, and people can download the Red Cross Blood Drive app, and it reminds you when to give blood. So those are a few things people can do. Thank you so much.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. The next is another proclamation, designate March as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month. Is Paul Gators in the, there he is. Okay. Actually, Mr. Gators actually sent me a request to declare this as Awareness Month, and it just happened that my neighbor across the street has suffering from the same illness, and so I became interested in. I'm going to let Paul really talk about his own story, but this really is kind of a, it is a rare disease, and it hits about somewhere in a neighborhood, something about of our population of over three-quarters of a million people. There are probably about 250 people who suffer from this illness. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the proclamation, Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So President Horsley and members of the board, thank you so much for this proclamation. I'm here on behalf of the Bay Area Multiple Myeloma Support Group and also the International Myeloma Foundation, which is sponsoring March as Multiple Myeloma Action Month. Your proclamation will help us to raise awareness of this cancer, which is, as Supervisor Horsley said, is rare, and it's also incurable. I was very impressed, when I approached Supervisor Horsley, I got a very quick response from him, and also from Chris Hunter in his office, and I really appreciate that, so we get this on the agenda. I recognize we're at the end of the month, but actually Thursday is International Myeloma Action Day. I just learned that yesterday from one of the support groups, so it's still a timely proclamation. I suspect many of you have not heard of Multiple Myeloma. You may remember about three years ago, Tom Brokaw announced that he had cancer. That's Multiple Myeloma. Like me, he had some back pain, had some rib pain, and probably like me, didn't realize that that was being caused by cancer. And like me, he didn't expect to then be going on to multiple chemotherapy treatments, and also going through a stem cell transplant, which is often referred to as a bone marrow transplant. I'm doing quite well. I can't speak for Tom Brokaw, but I work in the pharmaceutical industry, and I really had not heard of this cancer until I was diagnosed with it. Thankfully, it's a disease that was in the past treated with some fairly aggressive drugs, very toxic drugs. We now have much better drugs to treat myeloma. In many ways, I'm lucky that my diagnosis came now and not 15 years ago, when the life prognosis was really not very good. And my disease is under control, thanks to the two drugs that I'm currently taking, one of which was developed partly with support from the International Myeloma Foundation. Myeloma is a cancer of plasma cells in the bone marrow. It affects the immune system, so my immune system is somewhat compromised, and if it develops, it can lead to bone damage, which I had some of, and can also lead to kidney function damage as well. which I had some of, and can also lead to kidney function damage as well. Supervisor Horsley talked about some of the statistics, and again, statistically, we would imagine that somewhere between forty and fifty people in San Mateo County will be diagnosed with myeloma this year, so roughly one a week. Life expectancy has increased dramatically, because there are now some really good drugs that have been developed. Four drugs for myeloma were approved in 2015 by the FDA, but there is still no cure. Early diagnosis, I think, is really important, so you catch the disease early and you get treatment that you need early, and so this proclamation will help to raise that awareness, so people who may be thinking, oh, you know, my back's hurting, but I'll put up with it, don't, go and have someone look at it. So, thank you again for this proclamation. The IMF, the International Myeloma Foundation, is the oldest and the largest myeloma organization, which is dedicated to improving the quality of life of myeloma patients, and also of their families, and along with the International Myeloma Foundation, the Multiple Myeloma Research Foundation, and the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society of the U.S., are doing all they can to raise awareness of this rare cancer. So, thank you very much again for your help in approving this proclamation and raising awareness of myeloma across the county. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the Board. And now, we're onto item number five, it's conversations about Black History Year, and again, that's something that I have sponsored over the course of this year. In any case, I bring you today Carolyn Hoskins, and she is the founder and executive director of the nonprofit Dominique Hoskins Black History Museum and Learning Center Foundation, and is a curator of the extensive exhibit. She's the widow of Bob Hoskins, he was a former SF Defensive Tackle, and she's also a member of the NFL Alumni Association of Northern California and the Executive Committee. The museum and the learning center is named after Carolyn Hoskins' grandson, twenty-one-year-old Dominique Hopkins Hoskins, and he admits that, and he says, "My favorite part of the museum is the sports collection." And I do remember that Carolyn and Bob, when he was alive, had a store of sports memorabilia in Redwood City, and I also know that one of my aides used to have Carolyn come and have a traditional, kind of a black history dinner for kids at school. So, with that, Carolyn, could you go to the podium?
Thank you so much for having me today, I really appreciate this honor. I am the founder and director of the Dominique Hoskins Black History Museum and Learning Center. I am not a public speaker, but I am passionate about education. I never thought about opening a museum until my grandson Dominique was in Kenny Gordon at Central School in Belmont. Of course, during February, he had to write a report about a famous African-American. We had already did two reports on Dr. King. So, Dominique said to me, "Grammy, aren't there any other famous black people that did anything? Because I know everything there is to know about Dr. King." So, I said, "Well, Dominique, there are so many people, even people that Dr. King admired." So, we started this just as a school project, and other schools heard about it, and so we started traveling. We went to San Francisco, Oakland, Richmond, all up and down the peninsula. In the meantime, the exhibit is steady growing. Two years ago, with the help of Ray Mueller, David Bohannon donated a building in Menlo Park that was twenty thousand square feet to house a museum for Black History Month. We used all of the space and still had items in storage. We have over three hundred different categories. What we try to do is to come away with the stigma that African-Americans only participate in sports and entertainment. Schools today aren't teaching black history, they are only talking about the same people. Kids that come to the museum don't want to leave when the tour is over, because all of the history is new to them. I remember at Central School, talking to a class about black and white drinking fountains, and Dominique's friend Stephen said to me a couple of days later, after I was there at the school, he said, "Mrs. Hoskins, I am really mad at you." And I said, "Well, Stephen, why?" And he said, "Because you said Dominique couldn't drink out of the drinking fountain." Well, yes, he can, because Dominique is my friend. So, Stephen did not really understand the difference between segregation when you could not drink out of the water fountain. So, I had to explain it to him, the difference time when you couldn't. So, you see, knowledge is so powerful. I want the learning center to be where kids of color can learn their history and be... I am so not for February being Black History Month. I feel disrespected that you talk about me during February, and come March first, you close the doors until next February. There is not one subject in school that blacks don't excel in, and so they should be put in part of our history learning each and every day. Here on the peninsula, we have so many great people that took part in the civil rights movement. Right here in Redwood City, you have Gwen Morgan, who is the ancestor of Garrett Morgan, who invented the traffic light. Mildred Walker, who lives in San Mateo, was one of the Freedom Riders. Everyone is not gonna get a chance to go to DC to see the new Black History Museum, but that's okay, because we have so much history right here in our own backyard. There is not a day that I don't face some type of racism, but education is the answer to a lot of our problems. Know your facts and share your knowledge. A month ago, I was shopping in Belmont, and was in the aisle getting ready to get some things to make some tacos, and as I walked past, there was a lady there with a young girl, about seven, and she said to her mom, "There goes a nigger lady." So, I stopped, and I walked back to her, and I said, "Did you hear what she said?" And the lady said, "I was so upset, and I am so sorry." I don't know where she got that from. So, I took a deep breath, and I said, "Yes, you do, it came from your home training." So, I told her to look up the word and to know the hateful meaning of the word. It was a lesson for her, and also a lesson for me, because years ago, I would have reacted a lot different, but through education, I have grown. My dream, like Dr. King, is to help make this America a better place for our children, and I hope to do that with a permanent building for the Dominique Hoskins Black History Museum and Learning Center. Two years ago, I went to ask about showing my exhibit at the San Mateo County Fair, and I got an opportunity to do that. And a couple of days later, one of the directors from the fair came up to me, and he said, "You know, at first, I was very worried about how the public would receive your exhibit, but I have gotten nothing but great feedback." And so, last year, I was invited back to the San Mateo County Fair, and they gave me a building of six thousand square feet. Hopefully, I will be able to go back again this year. I want to leave you, excuse me, with this little thought. What would the world be without black people? This is a story of a little boy named Theo, who woke up one morning and asked his mom, "Mom, what would it be if there were no black people in the world?" Well, his mom thought about that for a moment, and then she said, "Son, follow me around today, and let's just see what it would be like if there were no black people in the world." Mom said, "Now, go get dressed, and we'll get started." Theo ran to his room, put on his clothes and shoes. His mom took on a look at him and said, "Theo, where are your shoes? And those clothes are all wrinkled. I might iron them." But when she reached for the ironing board, it was no longer there. You see, Sarah Boone, a black woman, invented the ironing board, and Jane Massacre, a black man, invented the shoelacing machine. "Oh, well," she said, "please go and do something to your hair." Theo ran to his room to comb his hair, but the comb was not there. You see, Walter Salmon, a black man, invented the comb. Theo decided to just brush his hair, but the brush was gone. You see, Linda O'Neill, a black woman, invented the brush. Well, this was a sight, no shoes, wrinkled clothes, hair a mess, even mom's hair, without the hair invention of Madam C.J. Walker, who was the first black millionaire. Mom told Theo, "Let's do our chores around the house, and then take a trip to the grocery store." Theo's job was to sweep the floor. He swept and swept and swept. When he reached for the dustpan, it was not there. You see, Lloyd P. Ray, a black man, invented the dustpan. So, he's put the pile of dirt over in the corner and left it there. Then he decided to mop the floor, but the mop was gone. You see, Thomas W. Stewart, a black man, invented the mop. Theo yelled to his mom, "I'm not having any luck." "Well, son," she said, "let me finish washing these clothes, and we'll prepare a list for the grocery store." When the wash finished, she went to place the clothes in the dryer, but it was not there. You see, George T. Salmon, a black man, invented the clothes dryer. Mom asked Theo to go get a pen and pencil, some paper, to prepare their list for the market. So, Theo ran to get the paper and pencil, but noticed the pencil lid was broken. Well, he was out of luck, because John Love, a black man, invented the pencil sharpener. Mom reached for a pen, but it was not there. William Purvis, a black man, invented the fountain pen. As a matter of fact, Lee Bridgeridge invented the typewriting machine, and W.A. Lord invented the printing press. Theo and his mom decided to head out to the market. Well, when Theo opened the door, he noticed the grass was as high as he was tall. You see, the lawnmower was invented by James Burr, a black man. They made their way over to the car and found that it just wouldn't go. You see, Richard Spikes, a black man, invented the automotive gear shift. They noticed that the few cars that were moving and running into each other, having wrecks, because there were no traffic signal. You see, Garrett A. Morgan, a black man, invented the traffic light. Well, it was getting late, so they walked to the market, got their groceries, and returned home. Just when they were about to put away the milk, eggs, and butter, they noticed the refrigerator was gone. You see, John Stammen, a black man, invented the refrigerator. So, they just left the food on the counter. By this time, Theo noticed it was getting mighty cold. Mom went to turn up the heat, and what do you know? Alice Parker, a black female, invented the heating furnace. Even in the summertime, they would have been out of luck, because Frederick Jones, a black man, invented the air conditioner. It was about time for Theo's father to arrive home. He usually took the bus, but there was no bus, because the electric trolley invented by Edgar Robison was not working. When the father arrived, he asked, "Why are you guys sitting in the dark?" Because Lewis Howard Lattimer, a black man, invented the filament within the light bulb. Theo learned quickly what it would be like if there were no black people in the world, not to mention if he was ever sick and needed blood. Charles Drew, a black scientist, found a way to preserve and store blood, which led to his starting the world's first blood bank. Thanks to Patrick Collins, astrologists are able to avoid motion sickness in outer space due to her equipment and training program. Mark Dean helped make desktop computers a vital part of daily life by figuring out how to connect scanner and printer to them. And what if a family member had to have heart surgery? This would not have been possible without Daniel Hale Williams, a black doctor who performed the first open-heart surgery. So, if you ever wonder, like Theo, where would we be without us? Well, it's pretty plain to see, we would still be in the dark. So, I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity, and like I said, the Black History Museum is so important to me, and I think it should be so important to San Mateo County. We have such a rich history here, and the Black History Museum have received numerous awards, from the One Hundred Black Women in San Francisco, the Multi-Ethnic Sports Hall of Fame in Oakland, the Peninsula Links, Senator Jerry Hill's Community Service, which I have won three times, and I was teasing Jerry, and I said, "Well, you've given me all of these awards, but I need a place now to hang all of these awards that you're giving me." So, he told me he's gonna be working on that. Positive Promotions from New York, Community Service Award in Palo Alto, and the Redwood City Sunrise Lions Club. And, like I said before, I am so passionate about this museum, because the kids really soak all of this knowledge up as a sponge, and I feel that when I talk to the kids and I tell them, "No matter who you are, be proud of who you are. Do like Dominique and I did. Go back and research your history, and let us be able to share your history," which I stand before you today as a very proud African-American woman. I am so proud of all of the great compliments that we are giving to this country, not back through history, but the things that we are accomplishing and things that we are doing today. So, again, I thank you, and if anyone would like to have any more information about the museum, I'm always open to coming and speaking about what we're doing and about the different things that we are trying to do, and hopefully, you know, we can make this a reality. So, again, I do appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Carolyn. That was instructive, so thanks very much for, it was a lot of contributions, just locally. Okay, we can go on to the next items. Item number six, we're gonna, service awards will be at 1:30, and then at 2:30, we will be looking at the five-year capital improvement plan. And now, we'll go on to item number eight, which is a resolution authorizing the hiring of a retired Pauline Huff. Juan Regosa?
Good morning, President Horsley, members of the Board, Mr. Malby, Mr. Byers. I'm here today to request your approval to allow Pauline Huff, an employee in my office, to return to work as an extrahelp employee on April 10th. California law requires a 180-day separation period from employee, from employment when an employee retires, unless the governing body of the employer approves an earlier return-to-work date. Pauline has been a county employee for thirty-seven years, and will retire on March 31st. She is responsible for maintaining the secure tax rule adjustments, which typically result in revised property tax bills or a refund to the property owner. Luckily, we have hired a new employee to take on Pauline's responsibilities. He started working yesterday. We need Pauline's expertise- We need Pauline's expertise to train the recently hired staff to ensure that we can continue to process secured tax rule adjustments in a timely manner. Therefore, I'd like to request your approval for Pauline to return to work on April 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just had one. Juan, I think your department does a great job, and you're always very thinly staffed. How long will the person work? Is it up to a certain amount, but what do you anticipate the number of hours will be?
You know, I suspect she'll probably be here until the end of June.
Okay, okay. All right, so to say I'm supportive of it, but these things always make me a little nervous. Like, let's say she was sick, couldn't come to work, then what would you do? You know, kind of raises the question of...
We have other staff in the office, but I think with her being here, she will train the new person, and this way, you know, we can make sure that we stay current and don't get backed up.
Any other questions?
Now move to approve this matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Going to item number nine is the Governing Board of Commissioners, the Housing Authority. It's the... I have a public hearing on the Moving to Work Annual Plan.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Rainwater. I'm the Planning and Program Innovation Manager at the Housing Authority, and I'm here on behalf of Kenneth Cole, the Director of the Department of Housing. Thank you for acting as our board, and I want to apologize, first of all, to Supervisor Horsley for one of the typos in the plan here that we're asking you to review and approve. I personally missed that in changing it over for you to be the President of the Board, so apologies.
No problem. I always love to catch a little errors because then it makes everybody aware of the fact that I read all this stuff.
So just to give a little context, the Housing Authority is part of HUD's Moving to Work Program. And this is a demonstration program that allows local jurisdictions to design and test new ways of delivering housing and subsidize housing to participants in the program. Right now, the Housing Authority is assisting up to about 5,000 low-income families here in San Mateo County in that program. We also have Permit Supportive Housing, which is also assisting disabled and individuals who have experienced long-term homelessness in finding and securing housing. So the program here in San Mateo is very well-recognized across the nation. We're one of about 34 agencies that have the ability to do this, and we're recognized nationally. A couple of the key pieces are self-sufficiency programs that allow families to get on their feet and back and able to be economically self-sufficient. That also includes those who have experienced homelessness, coming in through the Housing Readiness Program that you may have heard of before, also assisting foster youth who have been emancipated and helping them to get on their feet and are ready to go individually, and the VASH Program, which is helping veterans in our community to find and secure stable housing. So one other piece I'd like to just mention that this program also allows us to do what's called the Affordable Housing Fund, which is also helping with other partners in San Mateo County to build additional affordable housing here in San Mateo County. That without this approval of being a Moving to Work Agency, we would not be able to take those funds and to be helping in those development areas, so.
Before we open the public hearing, any other questions from the board? So, okay, is there a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Okay, in that case, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any motion now for a resolution to approve the Housing Authority's Moving to Work Annual Plan? Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now on to item number 10. This is a resolution accepting the report on the progress of implementing the assisted outpatient treatment, Laura's Law.
Mr. Caplan?
Good morning, President Horsley, board members, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. I'm pleased to be back in front of the board to give you an update on the implementation of our assisted outpatient treatment program, otherwise known as Laura's Law. We have a PowerPoint coming up. You may recall, when you adopted the program, you had asked us to return to give you a status report somewhere around the first year of implementation. So here we go. So just as a reminder, Laura's Law was enacted as AB 1421 in 2002. Individual boards and counties were given the option of implementing 1421. And in June of 2015, your board actually approved us moving forward to implement 1421. And you approved funding to both staff this and provide treatment slots for those candidates who were eligible. We have two components of the program. One is our staff of BHRS, our AOT team. Some of them are here today. You want to wave? Wave, there we are, some of our team members. So the team came together about a year ago, and then through a request for proposal process, CAMANAR was selected to provide the assisted outpatient treatment full-service partnership slots that began in August. So we're before the board, a little before a year of full implementation, but we thought it was timely to give you an update on how we're doing. So just as a reminder, the eligibility for enrollment in the program is pretty strict, and part of our team's responsibility is to assess eligibility to determine whether somebody is eligible for the program. Somebody has to be 18, seriously mentally ill, essentially lacking compliance with opportunities to engage in treatment, have a history of hospitalization, or some violent behavior that's noted, and that without treatment, we would expect the person's mental health condition and living condition to continue to deteriorate. So as I mentioned, there are two components to the program. One is our team that really is responsible for receiving referrals, doing the needs assessment to qualify somebody for the program, provide a bridge of case management until somebody who is eligible gets enrolled in our full-service partnership. If somebody refuses to accept services voluntarily and they meet the criteria, the team develops the court petition. And once the person's engaged in either voluntarily accepting or court-ordered, the team works with CAMANAR to make sure there's a warm handoff and a smooth transition. And then our full-service partnership provides an intensive case management service, essentially doing whatever it takes 24/7. It includes psychiatric services, some ongoing wellness and recovery housing, and also importantly, in addition to psychiatric services, mental health treatment, connection to other social supports. So I'm going to hand it over to Terry, who's going to really walk through what's happened so far in the program, and then we'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you. It's good to be here. So for those of you who already know me or those who don't know me, I'm Terry Wilcox Ridgers, and one of the things I do is oversee our Behavioral Health AOT Program. We also have some of the members from CAMANAR Incorporated here. I just wanted to point them out. If you want to hold up your hands, it's great to have you here today. So I wanted to go over some of the outcomes that we've had so far, and I think I just went in the wrong direction. There we go. So what we've done is to bring to you today some information for the first seven months of the program. So we actually got our staff, our BHRS staff, up and running July of 2016. So you can see by this one chart here, we've got referrals in the far left, and assessments, and then enrollments. We were able to start referrals right away in July. And what we do is we have a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week phone line and email address that people can call us or email us. We will have one of our staff respond within one business day to each of those. And so what we have in the beginning is a lot of people that were really waiting for the AOT services to get up and running. And you see a large number of referrals we had during the first three months. Starting in August, we were able to start enrolling people in the CAMANAR AOT FSP, so they got up and running pretty quickly. You can see that we enrolled five people within the first month that we had enrollments. In the total of seven months, we've actually had 141 contacts. Those are emails or phone calls. 20 of those were informational only, and the other ones were all people that were being referred for consideration. During the same time period, we've now, as of the end of February, enrolled 27 people out of the 50 slots that were provided into the CAMANAR AOT FSP. And actually, as of today, we've enrolled 30. So this is a very effective program that's working. We've been averaging about 10 new referrals a month and about four enrollments a month. Whoa.
Yeah, go on.
Thank you. Let's hope I don't do that again. Okay, so we're looking at race. What we can see here is the majority of people that have been referred are Caucasian, followed by Latino, Asian, and African-American. The unknown group are people who did not report what ethnic group they were in when the referrals were made, and they dropped out of sight before we were able to fully engage them and find out. Other is really a mixture. They might have various ethnic backgrounds and are kind of a blend. So looking at the 2015 San Mateo County demographics, if you compare us with 2015 demographics, they're 40% versus 62% that we came up with for our program. Latinos were 25% of our population, where we're only getting 10% referrals. Asians are 28% of our population versus our 9%, and African-American is about the same. And we really think this is kind of a common thing we've seen over the years. We have some cultural backgrounds that are more reluctant to refer people to services and tend to keep trying to treat them at home. And I'm sure there are other factors as well.
Just one curiosity about Italian. I'm half-Italian, so I'm sort of curious about my other people of Italian descent. Why are they single out separately?
We knew you were half-Italian, so...
On my mother's side. So it is kind of interesting that they would be... Is there any reason for that?
No, our group is so dedicated to what we're doing that we're trying to make things as specific as possible. And so my enthusiastic staff decided to expand our tracking. Let's see if I can get this right.
Put Irish on there.
There we go.
Irish people.
Irish, we need Irish.
So for gender, this is just kind of a quick slide. You can see that about half the people that are referred are men, and the other half are women, and we have had one transgender person referred so far. As far as age goes, we have people being referred from the age of 18 through the mid-'70s. And you can see there's a cluster of age referrals where the largest group is between the ages of 21 and 45. The color relationship, this is, you know, very interesting. The largest group of referrals we've had have been from clinicians and other healthcare providers in the community, very closely followed by families and family members. There's somebody that the person considers to be their family. This is followed by independent practitioners, inpatient practitioners in hospitals, and by police officers and other law enforcement officers. So housing at time of referral, this is also interesting. So the majority of folks referred were in their family home when they were referred, followed by homeless in the community, and then hospitals, and then jail. And what we did was, we were asked ourselves a question, well, where were people right before they were hospitalized, or where were they right before they were in jail? Majority of them are homeless. So this, you know, when you look at these numbers, you think, well, that means the majority of people were actually being referred to us, were trying to serve, were homeless within, you know, relatively short period of time before we engaged them. Enrollment, you can see by this slide that it often takes a long time to engage somebody. Sometimes it takes time just to find them after they've been referred. So because of a lot of our folks being homeless, it takes time for us to actually work with the family and then go out and outreach to them. And what our team does is, it doesn't matter where the person is or what's going on, when we get a referral on somebody, regardless of whether they meet the criteria or not, we help figure out what's going on with them and then get them hooked up with whatever they might need. So really a good front-end, front-door way of assessing people's needs at this high level. The people that do meet our criteria, we think that they do, we continue to outreach to them in the community, and, you know, we really just meet them in the hospital or in jail or in a park and try to find out what it is that they want and how they might feel safe talking to us. Because a lot of these folks have rejected services for years. And what this also means, too, is that because this number of people actually have been enrolled, we've done a lot of good work out there, trying to outreach to them and actually get them to trust us enough to take a chance on this service. So for our enrollment, so far, we've, as I said, we're up to 30 clients, but as of the end of February, 23% of the total people that have been referred had been enrolled in the CAMANAR AOT FSP. I also want to comment that the CAMANAR program, you know, the way we've got things set up, once we know that we have somebody that's willing to be enrolled, CAMANAR is there that day. They're ready to engage them, to work closely with them, to find out how to best meet their needs, and to get them into housing, to get them case management services, to really totally wrap services around them, which most of these folks have never had before. So far, we haven't had any involuntary enrollments. We've gone to court twice. The first one was dropped because the person refused to go to court. Now, we'll give you a case study here in a minute, and I'm going to talk about that person. The second one actually now has been through the court process. His family brought him in. He had his private defender with him who helped talk him through what the pluses and minuses were of accepting the services. He decided in court, rather than going through the court process, to accept the service. So our wise AOT Judge Miram suggested that rather than just dropping the petition, it's just been shelved. And the gentleman was told, hey, you know, we're really rooting for you, and we hope that you continue to work with the provider and accept the services. If you don't, we'll have you come on back, and we'll try this a different way. Okay, just some quick things about insurance. You know, when we started this, we weren't really focused in on trying to generate revenue. We were focused in on trying to reach this most difficult part of the population, regardless of benefit packages or who they belonged to before. They just needed to be our residents. Well, as it turns out, the 27 people that we had enrolled in the CAMANAR FSP, almost all of them, if not all of them, either have benefits or have benefits pending, so potential revenue that can be gathered. So some great outcomes. What we did was we looked at what was going on with the folks before they were enrolled a year before and then after enrollment. And we've had 15 episodes of hospitalizations prior to enrollment and only four afterwards. The length of stays, hospital days, 204 before to 29 after, episodes in PES, 46 versus 17. Homelessness dropped from 58% to 23%. So we still have some people that like living out there, but they've got services now. We're still trying to get them inside. I'll come back to unemployment, but arrests dropped from 19% to zero. Unemployment went up, and when I first saw that, I thought, oh, what's that about? Unemployment went up, and when I first saw that, I thought, oh, what's that about? And talking to my wise colleagues at Camenar and other places around the state, this is actually a good thing. It's, we have people that have been trying to work, that get the job, and then lose it a day or so later. They don't have to do that right now. So they actually have a break from employment just to get well, to get some healing going on, to actually get a better handle on their lives. So we have a couple of case studies. I'm not going to read this. You can read it later if you want to, but I'll just tell you about them. So the case study one is about a gentleman named Walt, who was hospitalized at our county hospital. One of the clinicians at the hospital called and referred him. He'd been through the systablello, he met all of our criteria. Our dedicated staff went out immediately as a team and started engaging him. They actually got him to agree to services during his short stay in the hospital. And when he was getting ready to be released that day, he said, well, I've changed my mind. I'm doing better. I don't need these services. And what do you do? So our staff said, okay, well, we understand that that's your plan. What's your plan after you get discharged? And he said, well, I'm going to do this, this, and this. They said, well, just in case it doesn't work out, we're going to be right there for you. Here's my card. And so during the next week, the client actually contacted our staff because he was having a hard time. He ended up being rehospitalized about a week later. And this time, what we did was, he immediately was very open to meeting with our staff. We right away got the Camenar AOT FSP supervisor, manager in there to help do, talk to him about their program. And that new team got him enrolled while he was still in the hospital, and helped step him out into our Redwood House, our crisis respite facility, and then worked with him from there to get into housing and receive medication support. He's doing much better these days. He's got, he's living in a board and care with supported case management around him. The second case study is about Jeff, who, this is a person that I'd mentioned in our data before. So Jeff is somebody who, very seriously mentally ill, also used a lot of drugs and stuff, lives in one of our county parks a lot, and hits a lot of the churches and mosques. And he's somebody that our community police force in San Mateo has a lot of contact with, and they really care about this guy. This guy's been arrested, what, 97 times, probably 100 by now.
Wow.
And so we worked together with them to engage this gentleman, who actually really likes us, but he's very paranoid. And so we got everything set up. We got the court petition, we got private defender, county counsel, everybody, the judge ready. And he decided not to go to court when we went to pick him up on court day. So we got to court, met in the judge's chambers, and Judge Mirram said, well, you know, there's no crime here. It's not a felony or a misdemeanor. He said, so therefore, I'm not going to court order that this person be dragged into court because this is a voluntary program. And so we had to cancel the petition, have it withdrawn. And since then, we continue to outreach to this guy. He's been in and out of our psych emergency. He's called us for help getting medications. He comes that close to accepting the services. My guess is that one of these days, he's going to accept and let us take him all the way, and we'll be able to get him really the help that he needs. So that's our presentation for today. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I'd just like to say congratulations. What a wonderful job you've all done.
Thank you very much.
Any other supervisor?
You just briefly, I mean, this is, you know, fantastic information and progress. The treatment resistant homeless are so difficult. You know, one thing, at some point, it might be interesting to calculate, like in the memo, you talk about, you know, the reduction of hospitalization stays and arrests and homelessness. I think it'd be helpful to inform the public about how much money we save when this occurs. You know, 97 arrests, how much, I can't imagine how much that costs. So that'd be, you know, maybe that's something we could put out on our, through our information office at some juncture.
That's actually a great idea. I know we did that with pathways when we started that, and it's amazing the amount of money that's saved by providing the treatment.
And I guess my only question is, you know, so how much is the kind of so-called black robe effect influential versus the fact that we've got a lot more outreach? You know, we have more, we have more FSP spots, we have Camenar working, we have, you know, our internal team working. So, yeah, any observations on the so-called, you know, the black robe effect, or what's driving the success of this?
That's a great question. I'm wondering the same thing. We do know from talking to the programs around the state and across the United States that the belief is that there's a good impact with the black robe effect, and it does help. And we just haven't had enough cases where we actually went to court so far, where we really know statistically. What we do know is that because, and I've been involved with our FSP program since they started, so I know that this approach of having a team engage people this way, where you're with them a lot and they really start to trust you, I think is really key. And I know that that's having a major impact on what we're doing.
But when interacting with the individuals, you know, only to have gotten anywhere close to court, I assume you communicate to them like, you know, we're trying to help you, but, you know, you know, we've got this other tool here, you might have to go. Are you, do you tell them that, or?
We do. We don't start off with that.
I imagine you don't.
But down the road, if we see them decompensating, we definitely bring that up.
Yeah. So one thing I'll just add, you might recall when we were talking prior to actually the board's approval for implementation, we were citing Orange County's experience because they were the first large county. And one of, the director down there, my contemporary, one of the things that she had said to me after they had been implementing for about a year, was that it was real, the effectiveness of the program was it created a resource for them to do this very intensive engagement work for folks that had been really resistant to, quote, coming in. And that was the, it wasn't the court process, it wasn't the black robe effect, it was really that outreach and engagement, that relentless outreach and engagement, not giving up. And I think our experience so far mirrors Orange County's experience, so I would basically say the same thing to you, what my Orange County contemporary said to me. I think this is about really this outreach and engagement to continue to work and stay with people who otherwise people have just said, we can't do anything else because you're not willing to come in. This group does that differently. And then the backup from Camenar's intensive case management, I think those two things jointly have made the difference. But we'll see. My guess is, over time, we will have some court experience, and we'll see if, quote, the black robe effect makes any difference. I don't think we'll be able to actually ever generalize that.
Right.
I think we'll only be able to say, in this one case, the black robe effect either did or didn't have an impact.
Mr. Malp.
Mr. President, I was just going to note that you received testimony under public comment this morning about housing. This is an example of a Measure K program that's not listed under housing, but very much is a housing program with special services for those that fall into this category. So sometimes, things that we do aren't listed as housing, but in reality, there's a significant housing component to them.
I think it's about a $3.2 million program, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions? None? I have one public speaker before we make a motion, Martin Fox.
Good morning again, President Horace, members of the board. Thank you for your service to the county. Like President Horace Lee, I also read the items that are posted for the meeting agenda. And so my remarks are directed towards that writing, and specifically towards the performance measures. As we all know, serious mental illness is the result of a brain disorder and may be complicated by a condition that limits a patient's understanding of the need for treatment called anosognosia. While treatment is known to manage the symptoms of serious mental illness, brain transplants are not currently available, and suggesting a hearing summons can cure, as a cure for a serious mental illness, gives no meaning to the phrase crazy as a judge. The true test of any rehabilitation program isn't measured by patients still undergoing treatment. I expect them to relapse while they're in the program so they learn how to deal with relapse once they've graduated. It's measured by the recidivism that takes place after the patient completes the program and the treatment. Program performance measures that focus on patients enrolled don't give you a true picture of whether or not it's really working. San Francisco is the land of no consequences, where an individual can choose not to engage in treatment without any consequences, legal or otherwise. If San Mateo County has become the land of no consequences, please let me know so I can let my real estate clients know that the price of their real estate's about to drop. I think we have to have consequences, and I think these are real legal consequences. When was the last time you were served with a summons? Wasn't that a consequence? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fox. Is there a motion to pass the resolution?
I would move, Mr. President, that we adopt a resolution accepting the report on the progress of implementing assisted outpatient treatment.
Thank you. Supervisor Grum, is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. We're on to item number 11, this resolution accepting the report, updating the progress and establishing a mental health pause for seriously mentally ill men and women in our jails. Sheriff Boulanos?
Thank you, and good morning, President Horace Lee, members of the board, Mr. Malp and Mr. Byers. Inmates with mental illness are a continuing and growing concern and challenge for our correctional facilities, and our jails here in San Mateo County are no exception. Sheriff's Office staff have been working closely with Correctional Health Services to expand treatment options for our mentally ill inmate population. Today, the Sheriff's Office and Correctional Health Services will report to you on the development and operation of dedicated behavioral health housing units for our male and female inmates. The behavioral health housing units are treatment-oriented, with the goal of returning inmates to general population in the jail, and ultimately, back into our community. In August 2016, the Behavioral Health Housing Unit was opened for women at the Maple Street Correctional Center. This unit is located in an eight-cell section of the jail, originally designed for administrative segregation. In January 2017, we opened a 10-cell behavioral health housing unit for men at the McGuire Correctional Facility. This unit is located in an area of the jail that was originally designed for the treatment of the mentally ill, but its size is limited, and we are exploring ways to expand the number of beds. Sheriff's Office and Correctional Health Services staff work in close partnership to maximize the success of the inmates housed in these units. Early results have been very positive, and you will hear about some of those successes today. The behavioral health housing units do have limitations, however, and are not suitable to treat inmates experiencing the most severe level of distress. We are currently using psychiatric emergency services at the San Mateo Medical Center for the most acute inmates. This is not a sustainable, long-term solution, and treatment options for our most severely mentally ill are still being explored. I will now turn over the presentation to my colleague, Health System Chief Louise Rogers to introduce the program. Assistant Sheriff Mark Robbins will discuss the role of our correctional staff, and the Director of Correctional Health Services, Carlos Morales, to tell you about the treatment programs. Thank you.
Good morning, President Horace Lee, members of the board, Mr. Malp and Mr. Byers. You likely recall that just over a year ago, we lost a very important contract that we had relied on for many years with Santa Clara for the treatment of people with mental illness who are most acute. And as the sheriff mentioned, what we're presenting today isn't a substitute for the acute services, and we do indeed continue to rely on psych emergency. But this is really a prevention strategy that we recognized was essential for preventing the deterioration of the patients that we have in the jail who struggle with serious mental illness. I think you likely know that nearly half the inmates in the jail have some sort of mental health problem, but it's a smaller number who struggle with serious mental illness, people with psychotic disorders, bipolar, and other really serious disabilities. That number is probably closer to 70, varies at any point in time. So we've been very pleased by the progress of these behavioral health pods, which, as the sheriff mentioned, are specialized living environments. And the purpose of these specialized living environments is really to promote psychiatric health and wellness and reduce symptoms so that people don't have to, so that they don't need emergency care, to monitor the inmates who may be at risk of having disruptive behaviors that would cause them to land in administrative segregation, either because they were violent or because they were vulnerable. So the purpose is really to reduce the number of inmates in administrative segregation, and also really to maintain a more peaceful environment in the jail that's less disruptive for the staff and for the other inmates. And so the goals are really to help the inmates function while they're in custody, reduce the incidence of harm and attempted self-harm, decrease their symptomatology and prevent relapse, and promote the wellness of everyone involved. So I'm going to turn the presentation over now to Mark Robbins, and then he'll have Carlos step up.
Good morning, President Horace Lee, Mr. Malp, Mr. Byers. I want to start this morning off by talking about some of the first steps that we took when we opened these behavioral health housing units. The first thing that we did was embark on training. Before we opened the housing units, we provided specialized training to the correctional staff that was selected to work in these housing units. Really, an important component of that training was to provide staff with de-escalation techniques and to provide them with tools on how to better respond to mentally ill inmates that may become or are already agitated. This training has really proved to be very beneficial, and it's really helped us to create a therapeutic environment in the jail setting. Our correctional staff have really spoken very highly of the training. That training was put on by Correctional Health Services, and we're really looking at expanding that training to other staff members in the jail. As the sheriff said, this really is a team approach that we're taking. It's a partnership with Correctional Health Services. We take this multi-disciplinary team approach. That team is made up of our classification unit, custody staff, clinicians, as well as mental health providers. Communication really is a critical component of the partnership that we formed, and mental health and custody staff actually hold five meetings a week, five days a week, where we actually come together on the housing unit to discuss the inmates and their progress and any challenges that they're facing. Additionally, we really hold an expanded meeting once a week where we bring everybody together, clinicians, nursing staff, our administrative classification unit, housing sergeant, management from Correctional Health Services, as well as the corrections captains to track, monitor, and address any issues that we're having. So this team approach really has been very beneficial, and it's working. Just yesterday, I received an email from a father of an inmate expressing how well his son has been doing in the behavioral health pod, and I know you'll hear some more of those success stories from Carlos Morales today.
Would those guys also be eligible for lower's law, potentially?
Potentially.
Okay.
Capacity, as the sheriff said, we opened our first, our first unit in August of 2016 for the women. And really, early success was critical for us in this, since it was really a new, a new way of somewhat of doing business and. a new, a new way of somewhat of doing business inside of the jail. So, we've really taken a very measured approach with first opening with the women and then expanding to the, the men over at, at McGuire in the former CTC area that was built for the treatment of the mentally ill. And the inmate population, while it's been small, we are looking at ways of expanding, especially with our, our male inmates where there's, is more demand. Capacity is really a complex question in corrections. 14 beds, you'll see up there, we may be able to accept up to 14 in our current environment, but 14 beds in corrections does not necessarily mean that we can house 14 people. When you have classification issues, and then when you add mental illness over on top of that, it becomes a very, a very tricky balancing act on who you can put together. But one of the goals of this, of this program really is also to help inmates socialize. So, we're looking for ways to bringing people together to increase that socialization, which would also increase our capacity to serve the mentally ill. So, that, that concludes my portion of the presentation. Let's just have, anybody has any questions, I'll be turning it over to Carlos Morales.
Any questions? None? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good morning, Board of Supervisors, County Council, and County Manager. So, Behavioral Health Program goes through classification, custody, behavioral health clinicians, and medical providers. Oh, that's the same, I'm sorry. That's, I'm going the wrong way. There we go. So, eligibility and admission. Inmates may be referred by medical, mental, correctional health, but must meet the following criteria. They have to have a mental condition that causes significant impairment in their everyday functioning and show signs of decompensation in his or her housing unit. Inmates can be removed from the Behavioral Health Pod at any point during programming. It's a level of disciplinary action depends on the severity and the frequency of the infraction, and it's a case-by-case basis. When an inmate commits an infraction, the BHP multidisciplinary team meets to determine the course of action, and they're very sensitive to the issues, and so they do allow for a lot of chances, if you would. BHP is voluntary, and the goal is to prevent them from needing acute care. We have no acute care available in the jail. An important distinction here, too, is also that the Behavioral Health Pod is not suitable for inmates who are too mentally ill at the time or too symptomatic and cannot consent to treatment. So, the, the structure of the program is divided into three phases. The first phase is the intake, where it's a Behavioral Health Pod orientation, they review the treatment plan, and they start developing their treatment goals. Inmates can move through these phases in a minimum of six weeks. They can progress or move back a phase depending on their behavioral manage plan compliance. The behavioral management plan, which is separate from the treatment plan, is measured through points. They earn up to 40 points a week that can be used as incentives, and these incentives, each phase has different incentives. For the first phase, it's sheets of paper, crayons, coloring pages for five points, journal, crossword puzzle, newspapers for 10 points. In Phase Two, they can get hygiene packets, stamp envelopes, food, snacks. And in Phase Three, which is graduation, they can get coffee and potential removal of a safety risk status and administrative segregation status, which is really critical. They also wear different clothing. They're not clothed in the red, orange, they're in this light green, which designates them in a special category. The structure of the program, like Mark was mentioning, there's, there's quite a few meetings between correctional staff and the treatment staff. They have a daily huddle with custody and treatment staff. On Tuesdays, they have the larger meeting that Mark was referring to with the supervisor, sergeant, and additional people, and they, they discuss each participant in the pod. And every day is an eligibility, whether the person can come out, whether they're able to function, and it's always at the discretion of corrections. We're in a partnership with them in the sense that they keep us safe in order to keep the therapeutic milieu available. Inmates who are on suicide risk, SCADUS, will turn the clothing that they wear and go back into Ferguson gowns, and the idea is to remove that after time. So, they have group treatment, and they also have group recreation time, and even the recreation time, they can gain some points for appropriate behaviors and socializing. So, the data that we're collecting, there's process measurement, which we look at the data elements that seek to answer this question. How many inmates did the BHP serve, and what are their characteristics? Demographic characteristics, number of inmates accepted, inmates eligible, what, what for the, for criteria, and who wasn't eligible? The outcome measures look at the effects of the programming. What are the effects of the services on participants, mental health symptoms, and overall functioning? We are looking at stabilization factors also, and as referenced earlier in the presentation, the goals are to reduce incidence of harm, attempted self-harm, decrease inmate symptoms, and prevent relapse, and promote self and inmate well-being. And so far, most of the folks that have come to us have come out of administrative segregation. So, we've had some early gains from the women in the BHP. The first inmate I want to discuss, she had increased treatment compliance, she was stable functioning, did very well, was sent to NAPA, did very little time in NAPA, came back and went into general population, which is really huge, not going into administrative segregation or having to come back to the pods. The second inmate I'd like to speak about is, they came into treatment very symptomatic, not taking meds, disruptive behavior, really delusional, and began participating fully in groups and stabilized on meds, after which time they went through all three phases, graduated, and went to general population, and then to the choices program. So, it's great to have a continuum that we can move people through. Inmate three entered the BHP, was disruptive behavior, symptoms related to recent trauma experience, began participating fully, met with a psychiatrist, took meds for a short period of time, stabilized, and this is the first time that this person actually engaged in treatment and is following up, and went to, is graduated, and is in choices. So, I just wanted to share this with you. Thank you for hearing about the pods, and if there's any questions.
Okay, any questions? Supervisor Grum?
Could you, could you tell us again how they, how you select the, the folks to get into this program?
Well, mostly, the referrals are coming from the correctional and mental health. Medical also refers, but they have to have a, a severe mental illness. They have to demonstrate some symptomology, and they have to be able to consent to treatment.
But, but you, you have, you have like psychiatrists working with them?
Yes.
And then you say, well, this, this, this person is, could really be helped in?
Mental health refers, yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Loco?
Supervisor Canepa? This is a great job. Thanks for the, the presentation. I have two questions. The first question is, are the health professionals on site 24 hours a day, or do they just come in daily? How does that work out?
They're staffing up until the evening, and there's always somebody, obviously, Sheriff's Office there, and we have nursing 24/7 available.
Okay, great. And then my next question is for Louise. Louise, you had mentioned earlier about the contract that you had with, with Santa Clara County. I just want to know a little bit about the, the contract. My understanding of it is that the county of Santa Clara withdrew, that they withdrew the contract for the county. If you can provide context and background, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. San Mateo County, through the health system, contracted with the county of Santa Clara for forensic psychiatric inpatient beds in their correction system. We had that agreement for many years for two beds, and they encountered some difficulties which have been well-publicized, and they also operate with their own constraints in terms of the volume of inmates they have that require that level of care. So, they informed us they were no longer willing to contract for those beds a year ago, January. And since that time, we've been relying on the psych emergency service when we have patients that require more acute care. And, but the sheriff and I will be returning to you all through the budget process with a proposal about how to address that need more thoroughly and systematically.
Supervisor Pine?
Thanks for the presentation. Maybe a month or so ago, Sheriff Valanos and his team took my whole office on a tour of Maple Street, and we spent a lot of time there and a lot of time at the, at the BHP program for women. So, it was very impressive, and I really was pleased that we were able to use our extra capacity and change that, add, add seg into this BHP program. Could, could you explain, because I'm not sure I totally understand what administrative seg is and what a Ferguson gown are, because this, these are the, you know, this program gets people out of those settings, and I'm not sure I really fully understand what they mean.
I can take that. Supervisor Pine, administrative segregation is really our, our highest control housing unit. It's for individuals, and they have to go through a, a classification process that otherwise, for a variety of reasons, can't get along in general population. They would either be a target, or their, their behavior is such that they're assaultive or otherwise act out, so they require a, the, the highest control level of, of management inside of a, inside of a jail. They generally don't interact, the individuals in administrative segregation generally don't interact well with one another, so their contact with one another is limited. Normally, they cannot house with anybody, so they have to be housed alone. The goal of the BHPs, the Behavioral Health Housing Units, is to get folks out of administrative segregation, and why this balance is so critical is because what we're trying to do is bring them together and help them to socialize and help them to interact with one another. And we've been very successful so far. I was just up there yesterday on the men's side, and every one of the inmates was out interacting with the others, and that's quite a change from an administrative segregation setting. Second question was, what is a Ferguson gown? A Ferguson gown is a very heavy-duty, quilted, similar to a, a moving blanket, if you would, type of construction, and it is used for individuals that are at risk of committing suicide. It can't be torn up or otherwise manipulated into something that could do the inmate harm, and that is something that is set based on their interview with mental health professionals. Correctional staff alone does not make that determination.
Okay, thank you. You're collecting a lot of great data, and I'd be interested if you've observed any differences in how the women and men inmates are responding to these programs. I mean, are, are there differences you've observed between the two?
I, I haven't seen the differences in, in dramatic way, but they're all really benefiting. It, it's just kind of, the, the socialization part is, is really important, especially for folks that withdraw and that become very symptomatic. They need to be engaged in order not to decompensate more, so the idea of socializing and getting people together. So, I, I haven't seen any difference between the men or the women, really.
And my last question, perhaps for Sheriff Valanos, I think you mentioned in the beginning that you had some, perhaps, capacity restraints for the men, and, and so Louise Rogers pointed out that, you know, maybe there are 70 people in inmates with pretty serious mental health problems, and we're serving, in this program currently serves eight women, six men, although the programs are, have a, you know, a discrete duration of time. So, when I think of the 70, you know, how is the capacity? So, we're up to 10 for women, up to 14 for men if we make certain changes. So, when we get to the 14, are you going to feel like we have what we need for, for, it sounds like we're going to be okay on the women's side, but I wasn't sure about the men's.
So, as Chief Rogers mentioned, we're going to come back to you with a budget item, but in regard to your capacity issues, we have sufficient capacity for our women's mental health wellness pod at MSCC. For our men, in order to accommodate the number of men that we believe can benefit from this type of treatment, we are looking at opening, making one of our pods at McGuire strictly a, a men's mental health pod. And so, we're working on a plan on moving our inmates around, working through classification to accommodate that. There's, there are going to be some financial needs, but as I mentioned, we're working on that plan with Correctional Health, and, and we'll come back to you during the budget process.
Mr. President, if I could just add to what the sheriff said. First, you know, let me compliment both the sheriff and Chief Rogers. I mean, we talk a lot about collaboration, but this is a case where, where you really have a mental health hospital within a correctional setting. I mean, it's really two very distinct and different disciplines that have to work extremely closely together for the sake of the, the benefit of the inmates, as well as the safety of the staff. And they've done that from day one, from the, the moment that we learned that we were losing the beds in Santa Clara. Both the Sheriff's Department and the Health Department began working on a plan for how we were going to provide these services. Chief Rogers hired HMA, a consulting firm, that delivered a report to us last fall that further elaborated on what the needs are. We were in the process of implementing the, the two units that were talked about today, and as the sheriff has indicated, they're well along in the planning for the next level of care for these additional inmates, along with talks with other counties in the region about even a regional facility for potentially some of the inmates with the severest mental illness issues. And we're definitely going to bring a budget back, probably in the neighborhood of about $6 million a year, either in June or no later than September, once we get the, the numbers finalized, to be able to staff and make whatever structural adjustments we need to make in order to accommodate this population. Once that's done and up and running, we'll, of course, evaluate it on a, on a regular basis, but we believe that this will go a long way, if not completely, meet the, the needs of that segment of our inmates that, that have, have mental illness.
Okay, before we take a motion on this, we have one final speaker on this, Martin Fox.
President Horsley, if I could just add a quick two cents to what, what County Manager Malp said. I also want to give a nod to the Health Director and the Sheriff for really taking this issue seriously. You know, inmate healthcare, particularly mental health, is a hot topic among county councils, county managers, health directors, and sheriffs. From where I sit as general counsel, I'm, I've been tracking very closely a, the flurry of lawsuits that have been filed against various counties throughout the state. I mean, this is no secret. I mean, it's all over the news, and there are several lawsuits. And, you know, these lawsuits are typically filed by the prison law office or the disability rights advocate sometimes together in association or in conjunction with big law firms, and the underpinning of those lawsuits is cruel and unusual punishment, you know, in, in humane treatment. It's a constitutional underpinning. So, we've been really spending a lot of time with the Sheriff's Office and the Health Director, really understanding the experiences of those counties and, you know, the approaches that they're taking to these issues, and, you know, what's, what are the best approaches? You know, what's, what's working in terms of managing mental health care for that, that subset of, of the geo-population?
Thanks, Mr. Byers. Go ahead, Mr. Fox.
Thank you again, President Horsley, and thank all of you, members of the board, for your attention to this. San Mateo County wasn't the only county affected by the cancellation of a Santa Clara County contract. I think you'll find eight out of the nine Bay Area counties had contracted with San Mateo County. It was, it created a regional-wide crisis, and I would like to compliment Chief Rogers and Sheriff Valanos on stepping up to the plate and hitting the ball. They've really done an excellent job. But the reason I'm here is to enlist the support of my fellow veterans, Mr. Slocum and Mr. Malp, because one of the inmates that spent time down in Santa Clara County's jail and who refused treatment and was jail and who refused treatment and was involuntarily medicated, and that's chiefly what happened to him, spent, according to him, 11 months in solitary confinement where he saw nobody but a psychiatrist who came in once a month who gave him an injection. He was an individual who was an Iraq and Afghanistan veteran, who had a problem with a family member, I believe was out in Portola Valley. And when the sheriff's department showed up, he, like me, if I was afflicted like that, attempted to disarm the deputy sheriffs. This is an example of the unique population of veterans that I believe need to be recognized as following a treatment plan that addresses those learned behaviors. And Mr. Malpys and Supervisor Slocum know exactly what I mean. I expect that the acute care plan will address veterans' issues.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll follow up on that. Thanks, Mr. Fox. We're going to have to at least take a break pretty soon, so can, is there someone willing to make a motion to accept this report? Supervisor Grun?
Sure. I would move that we adopt a resolution accepting the report updating the Board of Supervisors on the progress in establishing mental health pods for the seriously mentally ill men and women in our jails.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to have to take about a 10-minute break.
That's a good thing. We should have time.
Okay, we're back from a short recess. We'll take item number 12, which is a recommendation to continue the state, the local state of emergency related to the widespread and increasing damage due to the storms commencing in January of 2017. Mr. Porter?
I wanted to provide a brief update on the damages that we're seeing in the unincorporated county areas. And when I'm done with that, very quickly, Lieutenant Fogarty will speak about what is going on with the cities and the county in general. So just to provide an update, we're continuing to see storm damage appear on our county roads. We have updated the ordinance or the resolutions, resolutions, that you'll be looking at, the emergency declarations, to reflect some additional damage that we've seen. One is on Capistrano Road. We've seen a box culvert out there that's undermined, which we've added to the list. On Marata Road, which is out in Miramar, I showed a picture of a wing wall that was suffering at the last time that we went to the board. That wing wall has since failed, so that fell off the side of the bridge. There's no immediate danger, but it does need to be repaired. And finally, on Alpine Road, we are seeing additional slipouts. It's beginning to become like old La Honda Road, where there were isolated slipouts that appeared to be easy to repair. Now we're seeing a series of those. So now we're getting long lines of this damage. So that was included in the proclamation as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Fogarty.
President Horsley, members of the board, County Manager Malpys, County Council Byers. As was already said, in the operational area, we now have actually more damage reported to us, and we have continued to see damage still occurring from actual slippage from the water that has been hyper-saturated in the soils. So we have received information on damage from cities of Burlingame, Belmont, San Mateo, and Pacifica. In addition to that, we were made aware of Middleton Track Road, which is in La Honda. There is a private road that services as the emergency services area and has a population of 75 people. It affects 25 structures and 50 parcels of land. That road is now significantly damaged and almost making it impossible. In addition to that, we have information from the city of Millbrae. There was a mudslide that was located across from 516 Richmond Drive. The width of the mudslide was actually 60 feet, and it went across the entire roadway. It now has caused the actual closure of the road itself. So, and that recently occurred. In addition to that, there is Butino Canyon Mutual Water Company, which also has services for a road that goes to 20 residents, which also is now significantly damaged as well. Again, this is sort of continuing to keep evolving as the roadways and as the hillsides have been hyper-saturated from the water. Even though we've had relatively good days, and that's good, we still continue to see slippages.
Okay. Any questions? No questions? In that case, is there a motion?
Move approval?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll now go on to item number 13, which is a Measure K resolution authorizing at one time $227,850. Measure K to life moves. Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of time, let me just say that the $227,000 buys a lot of repairs and enhancements to life move facilities in the county, which will result in, I think, an improved quality of life for the residents of those facilities, as well as safety for youngsters and families. And I would make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing at one time $227,850 grant of district-specific Measure K funds to life moves for repairs at the Redwood Family House and Haven House.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 14, County Manager's Report Number 6 for 2017.
Mr. President, just a couple of items to note. First, that Meyer Ware has been appointed the chief defender in the private defender's office. And also to note and to congratulate Deputy County Manager Reyna Faralis has received the 2016 Wes McClure Outstanding Assistant Award from the Municipal Management Assistance of Northern California, an award well-deserved for her many years of work in the field and working to mentor up-and-coming young leaders in the profession.
Congratulations, Reyna. That's great. Okay, any other comments? Okay, and we'll go on to item number 15, which is a study session to consider the adoption of a resolution to support immigrants residing in San Mateo County.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure this is really a study session, but in any case, I would invite Mr. Callagie, Assistant County Manager, to the podium to kick this item off, if I could.
Great, thank you, Supervisor Slocum. Mr. Malpys? I'm going to briefly kick this study session off and then bring up the experts to really talk about what's going on in this county, so that you can certainly ask them any questions that you may have. As everyone remembers, last month, the board adopted a resolution affirming San Mateo County's commitment to support and respect all community members regardless of ethnic or national origin, gender, race, religion, sexual orientation, or immigration status. The item before you today is really a continuation of the steps the county can take to further support members of this diverse community. Immigration, of course, continues to be a very important issue in this county. And for this county, immigration is not a political issue, it's a humanitarian issue. We have immigrants still living in this county who are disenfranchised, certainly who are isolated and fearful, and because of that fear are not accessing services. We have always been a county that strive to level the playing field of equality and access, and what we are doing here today furthers that pursuit. So to put this important subject matter into context, we have invited some speakers to come today to share their experiences. And the first person I would call up and invite up would be our immigrant services coordinator, Jasmine Hartenstein, who can share with you what she has been doing since the launch of the Office of Immigrant Support and Coordination a year ago. So we'll start with Jasmine.
I've never seen her before. Good morning, Board President Horsley, members of the board, Mr. Byers and Mr. Malpys. Oh, is this it? Sorry. All right. So what I'm basically going to tell you today is a little bit about what the Office of Immigrant Support and Coordination has been doing over the last year and what it continues to do and hopes to do in the future. The Office of Immigrant Support and Coordination was a two-year pilot program that was brought into existence to better serve the immigrants of San Mateo County. Throughout the year, we have attended meetings, forums, and other events to gain community feedback on the immigrants' population and their needs and challenges. The office has also been a point of reference for many organizations, community members, and residents for resources and services provided already. So some of the things that we've been doing are coordinating workshops with the Human Services Agency and some of the nonprofit legal service providers in the area. We've worked with IIBA, Legal Aid Society, Community Legal Services of East Palo Alto, and many other nonprofit legal service provider organizations to host these workshops, recruit and train hundreds of volunteers within the community, screen all applicants who attend these workshops for citizenship eligibility, provide application assistance and fee waiver assistance, and lastly, give a final review of each applicant's application before leaving. These services can cost residents anywhere from $100 to $1,000, but they receive everything at the event for free, including resources to prepare and study for the interview and the exam and other community resources. We have outreach to over 9,000 residents in San Mateo County that are Human Services Agency residents. Almost 1,500 clients received initial screenings, with over 700 individuals completing their application for citizenship to naturalize to become U.S. citizens, and with over 500 of them also being eligible for a fee waiver, which saves them the application assistance or the application fee for USCIS, which is 680 previously, which now is 725. So we've saved residents $350,000 alone from USCIS fees, not including attorney's fees. Oh, sorry. What did I do? Okay. We've also hosted San Mateo County's first immigrant integration summit. We had over 120 attendees from the community, legal service providers, organizations that are community-based, faith-based communities, education staff, county staff. One common theme that came up during the summit along this, we had sent out a survey, and in that survey and during the summit, a theme that was common was access to services and barriers to those accesses or services. And one of those barriers is language, language access. So not only having staff being able to speak another language, having access to a language line, multiple signs in different languages. In San Mateo County, 46% of the households speak a language other than English at their home residence. Also with the survey from the attendees of the summit, 84% said that they thought that the summit was either excellent or good, and the same amount had said that they learned something new to take back in their works. And many of the attendees also suggested to have a summit like this in the future. I've also developed a website for the Office of Immigrant Support and Coordination for residents to go to, to be able to find resources and services in their area, not only for residents, but also for service providers. Throughout this year that I've been in the office, we've had a lot of people call concerned community members, staff from education, staff from health, legal service providers, asking about resources that they don't provide. Where can I give my client the next step information? I provide legal services, but where can they get mental health information? So the website has a list of information that's similar to the Community Information Handbook. Individuals, as well as resource providers, can find immigration information, request a verification of benefits letter from the Human Services Agency directly, and also can view an interactive map of things like local food pantries or ESL and civics classes. We've also worked with Legal Aid Society to collaborate on a brochure that HSA and the office had put out together. The brochure tackles an issue that many of the nonprofit partners have brought up in community meetings, that many government agencies face when outreach to the immigrant populations. There's a hesitancy to receive help from the government, and this is now more true than ever. And this was the first document from HSA that clearly stated that the agency is there to help and not collect data and not collaborate with ICE. That's not their main point of service. So some of the changes at the national level are also having a profound effect and are being felt here locally, and some of these current projects that are listed up here have adapted to this new environment to better serve our immigrant community. As a nation, we're constantly seeing new executive orders that not only instill confusion, frustration, and fear, but are affecting the lives of those living in our communities here. I've had calls from school teachers, from health providers, concerned communities about their students, patients, and neighbors, and how they're not attending classes, how they're missing their doctor's appointments, and having a heightened level of anxiety and fear. We've also had HSA clients who are permanent legal residents, members who are living here legally, who are calling us, asking if they can travel with their green card, if they can help get access to citizenship, if the citizenship workshops that we've invited them to are actually real. That's coming from residents that are legally living here as well. So what we feel at a national level, we're feeling at a local level among all immigrants. So some of the current programs and projects have been about, have come about by the trends that we've seen, the gaps in services the office has explored, and community feedback from forums and summits, and our changing political landscape. So what we've been doing now, we've held one Know Your Rights and Hate Crime Information event in Redwood City, and we're holding another one on Thursday in San Mateo. The idea is to have these in all regions of the county. We partner a legal service provider that's local to the area with the local law enforcement. So we used, or we had the sheriff's department at the first one, along with the Redwood City Police Department. At this next one, we'll have the San Mateo Police Department with another legal service provider. And we're continuously trying to provide community outreach and information dissemination, so making sure that the community is getting the right information that's happening. We're still providing free citizenship workshops, Immigrant's Gateway to Resources, a Resource Guide, specifically that kind of mirrors the website for civics classes, ESL classes, immigration access. We're also exploring a language access policy analysis, so that we wanted to make sure that the attendees at the summit were heard and that we understand that the language access for services is an important issue for us as well. Exploring the idea of a second immigrant integration summit, cultural competency training, peer mentoring pilot program. I could go on and on, but I'm a team of one, so I've only had so many things that I can actually accomplish. So in conclusion, I think these programs and projects show the importance of the services that we provide to San Mateo County's immigrant population as a whole, and the importance to continue to provide these supports. And to put a little bit in perspective, I didn't have a lot of data or statistics or demographics, because we have a Stanford professor that will be going over that for San Mateo specifically. But to show you that this is a county-wide effort, I broke it down into a very, very, very rough estimate of immigrant populations in each district. So District 1, 35% of the district are foreign-born.
Is there a slide?
No, sorry. This was done yesterday after I had submitted the PowerPoint. District 2 is 34.8% of the district is foreign-born. District 3, 21.3% of the district is foreign-born. And I want to note that this was from the American Community Survey from 2011, 2015, and they don't have a good idea of the undocumented population. So you notice that the coast seems low, but it's because undocumented immigrants aren't going to self-identify. District 4, 35.9% are foreign-born, and District 5, 45.6% are foreign-born. So I think that the numbers also show that this should be and will continue to be a county-wide effort, at least on my end and hopefully the rest of the community. Thank you. Any questions? Sorry.
Any questions?
I have a question. Thank you for your presentation. Can you talk to me a little bit about what you currently do around language access?
So, yeah. So actually, we just started this process about a month or two ago. I'm working with county council, and we sent out a survey to each department head, asking a series of questions based on what are the current types of language access resources or tools your office uses? What type of interaction with the community do you have? What percentage of immigrant population, or not necessarily immigrant, but non-English-speaking population do you face on a day-to-day basis? Do you face it as a whole? If there were capacity increases, what would you want to have? If there were capacity increases, what would you want to have in your department to better serve those that don't speak English? So, right now, we're almost, we've almost compiled the full list. We're still waiting on a few departments. So, once we do that, we're going to analyze where are the gaps, what are some counties or some agencies already doing? So, like the health system, NHSA actually have pretty robust policies in place because of federal law or state law. And so, to see if we can mimic that in other agencies or departments that don't have that already. And we're also looking into other counties and what they're doing.
Great. The reason I say that, in my particular district, there's multiple languages spoken. We have a huge Yemeni community, Arabic community. We also have, which is rather interesting, Daly City is the largest, speaking for Daly City now, the second-largest in terms of Filipino-Americans. I think it toggles between that and Honolulu, Hawaii. But, one of the things I hear from my community is around Burmese language access. So, we have, it's the largest Burmese community in the United States, maybe second to Fremont, but it's usually one or two. And so, what I'd be curious to do is, once you do this survey and study, is to really, and if you could, if staff can share sort of what your findings were, I think that would be really helpful to us. It's my understanding, though, that the county does a tremendous job in terms of language access right now, and I think, you know, you see that. I'd just be curious to those data points, if you can provide that to me, okay?
Yeah, of course.
Thanks.
May I ask a question?
Do you work with the schools? Because the schools clearly have this language problem. I wonder what they have done to put this in place.
Yeah, I haven't worked with the schools specifically on this. We work with them in other ways, but we haven't explored that in their capacity yet.
I'm sure they have something in place because of the, they're teaching the children that we worried about, the adults.
Yeah.
Sure. Any other questions? I have about five speakers on this subject. So, you're going to come back up?
Three other speakers. So, thank you, Jasmine, very much. Let me take this opportunity to next introduce Stanford Professor Tomas Jimenez. Professor Jimenez is the Director of Undergraduate Program in Comparative Studies in Race and Ethnicity and the Director of Graduate Studies in Sociology at Stanford University. His research and writing focuses on immigration, assimilation, social mobility, ethnic and racial identity. He was one of the main speakers at the Immigrant Summit last year and was simply outstanding. And I think that you will find his research on immigrant issues in San Mateo County very illuminating. So, Professor?
Thanks so much for inviting me to be here, and thank you for allowing me to address you today. I've been asked to be a little bit less than professorial in terms of the amount of time that I speak, so I will do my best. And what I'm going to do is give a kind of 35,000-foot view out of the window of an airplane, sense of the demographics of San Mateo County with respect to immigrants, and then lay out some principles of immigrant integration that I think punctuate the importance of the work that Jasmine's office is doing. So, I just want to start off by visually giving you a sense of how much San Mateo County has changed in the last generation or so. This is a map of San Mateo County divided up into its census tracts, and as the census tracts get darker, the proportion of the population that is foreign-born grows. In the summit, I went through different decades, but I'm going to fast-forward here on 1970 to the period for which we have the most current data, which is 2014. Today, San Mateo County is one of the largest per capita immigrant counties in the United States, rivaling Los Angeles County, Santa Clara County, Miami-Dade. Roughly, excuse me, more than a third of the population in San Mateo County was born in another country. If you add to that the proportion of the county's population that was born in another country or whose parents were born in another country, you likely have more than half of the population grew up in an immigrant household relative to 13% of the United States as a whole. San Mateo County's immigrant population has grown rapidly, although not as rapidly as the rest of the United States, but since 1990, the immigrant population has grown by about 54%. It's doubled in the United States as a whole, but recall that San Mateo County has always had a large immigrant population, so we had a pretty large starting point to begin with. San Mateo's County immigrant population differs in some respects from the United States as a whole, whereas in the United States as a whole, and I direct your attention to the bottom portion here, about 3 in 10 come from Asia and more than half come from Latin America. You can kind of flip that for San Mateo County, where half of the population, immigrant population comes from Asia, and a little bit more than a third come from Latin America. Nonetheless, I think, as one of the supervisors was pointing out, a very diverse immigrant population here. San Mateo County relative to the rest of the United States is a very highly educated immigrant population. Almost 40% of the immigrant population in San Mateo County has more than a bachelor's degree, just adding here the proportion with a bachelor's degree and the proportion with a graduate degree or a professional degree, and that compares with about 28% in the United States as a whole. If you take the ratio of high-skilled to low-skilled immigrants in San Mateo County, where high-skilled immigrants are those with a bachelor's degree or more, and low-skilled are those with less than a high school degree, it's about 1.8 to 1. So, that is to say, for every immigrant who lacks a high school degree, you have almost two immigrants who have a college degree or more in San Mateo County. And in the United States as a whole, I should say that the growth in the immigrant population right now is coming from the high-skilled population. So, people, the rest of the country is catching up to San Mateo County. Here's where I think we start to get into some figures that speak to the importance of the work that Jasmine's office is doing, and that's with respect to English, or language access, I should say. So, if you look at the proportion of the county, not the immigrant population in the county, but the county as a whole, nearly 1 in 5 report that they speak English less than well. These are the very people who need the kind of services that Jasmine's office is offering. So, again, this is the county as a whole, nearly 1 in 5 residents of San Mateo County relative to about 9% in the United States as a whole. The elephant in the room when it comes to immigration in the United States, and I would argue even in San Mateo County, relates to legal status. Almost 1 in 10 individuals in San Mateo County, again, we're talking about the county population as a whole, not the immigrant population, say 8%, it's close to 1 in 10, are unauthorized. And if you look at the immigrant population, it's about 22%. That's a much higher rate than the rest of the United States. I should say, the top line is a much higher rate than the rest of the United States. So, you have a large proportion of the population who's unauthorized. Although we don't have the figures here, it's safe to bet that a large percentage of those unauthorized immigrants have children who were born in the United States. You have what you call mixed-status households. And this, I think, is the issue, the ball and chain of immigrant integration. It is the thing that hampers immigrant integration more than anything. If I had to wave a magic policy wand in the United States to ease the pathway for immigrants and their children, and their grandchildren even, to become more well-integrated, it would be to lift the dark shadow of legal status, or I should say illegality that hangs over the head of so many of them. Contrary to a lot of stereotypes about immigrants in the United States and perhaps even about San Mateo County, the immigrant population is quite well-settled, particularly here in San Mateo County. 67% of the overall foreign-born population has been here since before 2000. Large majority has been here for nearly two decades. With respect to just the unauthorized population, nearly half have been in San Mateo County, I should say, in the United States for a decade or more. So, this is a well-settled population. You can infer from that that these are people who have set down roots in terms of family ties. Many of them own homes, many of them have children. They are, in many ways, in spite of their legal status, well-integrated into the United States and San Mateo County, although I would emphasize again that legal status is a detriment to that, and there's really good evidence showing that that detriment reverberates into future generations. So, let me close by outlining some principles of integration that I've gleaned from the research literature and indeed my own research on immigrant integration. The first is that we generally define integration as a process whereby groups, and we generally define groups in terms of ethnicity, come to resemble each other. That's a process that is something of a two-way street, as I'll point out in a second. It's a process that takes time. We often talk about immigrant integration, but that's a bit of a misnomer. Immigrant integration, and many of you may know this because you come from immigrant families yourselves, takes generations to unfold. Having said that, starting points are really important. Starting your time in the United States without legal status, starting your time in the United States without the ability to speak English, starting your time in the United States without an adequate-paying job or adequate housing is a detriment, not just to the integration of the immigrant generation, but to future generations as well. Starting points matter. Having said that, and we focus heavily on the immigrant population, I want to emphasize, this comes right out of research that I'm doing, that immigrant integration is something that actually everyone's doing. You can think of it as a multi-directional process involving the kind of proverbial guests who are the immigrant population and the longtime established populations that have been in San Mateo County for generations. Integration policies, and I can say more about this if you have questions, can make everyone feel welcome, immigrants and native-born alike, long-established populations and the second generation. I actually have really good evidence from experimental research showing that proposals to make, to establish policies that are more welcoming to immigrants actually improves feelings of welcomeness not only among foreign-born Latinos, US-born Latinos, and even US-born whites. And so, we often say in research on immigration that integration is what happens when people are making other plans. Immigrant integration, social integration is a byproduct of the pursuit of educational aspirations and economic opportunities. So, in my mind, for me, the goal of immigrant integration should be to help people make other plans, set them up so that they can adequately pursue their educational and economic aspirations, and the other forms of integration that lots of people worry about in terms of social integration tend to follow. So, that's 100 years of immigration research wrapped up in one slide. I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Do we get any units from Stanford for that?
I can give you one unit for a directed reading.
Okay, okay, thank you. Do I have to take it? I hope I don't have to take it.
At least a six-page final paper.
Any questions?
Great presentation.
Thanks. Is there one more speaker on this? Thank you, though. Thanks very much. That was very instructive. Thanks.
Professor, thank you very much, and thank you for hanging in here with us today. I know we went over time. The last two speakers that we're going to bring up are Lina Mira and Rosa Gomez from Puente, and Puente really needs no introduction. They do a tremendous service, direct services to men, women, and children in some of our remote coastal regions. So, I'm going to have them just briefly talk about some of the challenges that they're seeing out in the community.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. So, my name's Rosa Gomez. I'm actually the Secretary on the Board of Directors at Puente, which is a nonprofit organization that does serve a lot of the immigrants on the coast. I'm a private immigration attorney, but previously I worked for two different nonprofits, one in Redwood City and one in East Palo Alto, as an immigration attorney, and I'm just here today to speak to the need of, for pro bono attorney services, particularly in immigration on the coast. So, at this time, there are no attorneys working at any of the nonprofits on the coast, and it's particularly difficult because a lot of those immigrants find it very difficult to drive over the hill to get any services that are available to them. There are some private immigration attorneys, including myself, that do try to provide low-bono services to those immigrants, but the population that we are talking about are a lot of undocumented adults and children, and also a lot of longtime green card holders that work on farms and nurseries, who don't really have high salaries and are very low income and can't afford really to pay for services. So, that's really what I'm here to highlight, and I'll let...
Hi, my name is Lina Mira, and I'm Program Director for Puente. Let me give you a short story. I started working in this last summer at Puente. So, between the summer and November, we saw something completely different. We saw a lot of fear in our community, people completely, almost to the point of being paralyzed, not wanting to go out. If you know Pescadero, you have to go out if you want to go shopping, if you want to do your daily business. If you live in La Jolla, you also have to do that. So, come January, by January, we had already had two community action forums because people were very concerned. Some of the concerns are from parents. What do I do with my child if I am detained while I'm shopping? And those are the kind of concerns that Puente hears, although we are not an immigrant resource center necessarily. Those are the issues that we're dealing now. And we have had to do several Know Your Rights campaigns where we go out during lunchtime to the farms and ranches and the nurseries and inform workers about the rights, and also citizenship campaigns. So, we have about, in all of these forums, even though it's a very small community, we've had over 60 people attend, and we have volunteers ready to support people with tutoring and provide these services. So, we really do need this. In regards to language acquisition, our staff, most of us are bilingual as well, but we also have some people who don't speak Spanish nor English. They speak Chatino, which is a native language, a dialect. And so, especially with immigration, it's very nuanced. You need people who understands people's languages and can communicate. So, I can take any questions at this point.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lina, Rosa, thank you very much for being here with us today. Members of the board, this resolution before you is really in alignment with the county's commitment, as reflected in our mission statement, to treat all people with dignity and respect. Our county certainly works better when all voices are heard. The resolution will provide humanitarian response to our most underserved populations at a time which fear from uncertainty at the federal level has caused stress, concerns, lack of participation, and anxiety for our diverse community. I'd just like to point out a couple of things in closing here. On the Office of Community Affairs, certainly we're going to, the plan would be to lean into immigrant-related issues and gaps that we've found right now. We have made this unit flexible enough that as time goes on, we'd be able to use it to serve other needs in the county, whether it's district-specific needs or county-wide related issues. It is also a unit that is really no new, no new net county cost for the FTEs that are involved here. We've taken existing resources and pulled them together. We'll use Ms. Duran's unit, Communication Unit, to really leverage the resources we have to reach out to everyone in this community on a variety of issues. And like I said, going forward, it could be issues related to veterans, homelessness, seniors, whatever it may be that the districts are interested in. And also, I'd just like to point out that I think in the resolution, it says that there's availability of 267,000. In talking with our HSA Director, Eleonore Rodriguez, I understand there's $276,000 available for legal services, should you desire to allocate that money. And with that, I'll certainly try to endeavor to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Callagie. So, how are we staffed right now? And what areas are we staffed in the county?
Right now, as indicated, Jasmine is our staff associated with immigration, but we do have North Fair Oaks Forward, and we do have another position that is vacant, an analyst position in the county manager's office that we plan to rotate into a program manager associated with this unit. So, we would have the three NFO staff members, we would have Jasmine, and then we would have the new program manager. And then, we'd leverage those resources with Michelle Duran's resources to really try to create a comprehensive outreach effort throughout the county.
I think it's, I mean, I commend Mr. Slocum. I think it's a great idea. I think one of the things I've seen in community organizing, when you hire these positions, they should probably come from the neighborhoods in which they're from. And I know, I think you've touched on it earlier, it's like me going to North Fair Oaks, pretty difficult, and someone from North Fair Oaks coming to Daly City, there has to be, in my experience, and you know, I was on the city council, there has to be credibility, if that makes sense. And usually, where that credibility comes from is that those people, you know, they have to live in the community. They have to live in the community. So, what I would urge staff is, as this program begins to expand, is that we identify, I think the county does it now with the job training program, identify people who live in their community and see if there's opportunities to work in their communities, and that's what I would just urge you to consider.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Otherwise, I have a number of speakers.
Couple of questions if I might. Just to follow up on Superzic cannabis' point, so my understanding from the conversations that we had prior to the meeting, again, you'll be bringing some of the North Road Forward folks, and you're consolidating some existing people, and I think they all speak Spanish now, if I remember.
They do.
And so, I... And so, I think something to think about, particularly in light of the data we've seen from Stanford about the high percentage of Asian immigrants, of course, there's multiple languages within that, that, you know, we might want to, you know, when we have an opening, we might want to think about having another language skill set brought into that pool.
Absolutely. And fortunately, or unfortunately, we will have an opening as Jennifer moves on to graduate school here very soon, so we're going to miss her, but it gives us a great opportunity to really make it a little bit more diverse.
And in advance of the meeting, I spent a little time emailing with Eliana about kind of what we had done in the past over the prior two years, because we're reallocating a lot of money that we've already put aside. So, the actual incremental change in dollars is modest. But I think the most important number was, you know, in the prior two-year cycle, we were spending about $152,000 on immigration defense services.
Right.
So, you know, at some point, I'd like to understand kind of like what we got for that, you know, the type of cases we represented, you know, where the clients resided. But going forward, we're going to, because we're taking money away from other things, like, you know, from other allocated pots, we're going to up that by 125,000. So, we're going to really, you know, going to have more money for these immigration services. So, the question of how much money, it's not clear to me.
Yes.
How many people are there in the pipeline? What type of people do we want to have our legal aid and other providers represent? You know, presumably, we're not going to represent every undocumented person. You know, there are certain types of undocumented, like children, unaccompanied minors, or parents with children born here, people seeking political asylum.
Right.
But there are other folks probably aren't going to represent, you know. So, anyway, I think it's very unclear to me how much we should invest in this. It's a very important need, but I just, I don't see the background driving the calculation, which is probably pretty hard to do right now, real time.
Well, to answer your question about the amount, we do have available 276,700...
Right.
...$700. And in the past, it's mostly been workshops. In fact, I think it's exclusively been spent on workshops for immigrants. But it certainly could be up to this board to decide how that money is allocated, on what particular...
Yeah, I know the workshop, but the one that Jasmine organized, and I think she's done a number of them in South San Francisco, was fantastic. Those were folks that, they are eligible to have green cards. So, there we know, because I think what we're talking about now, and again, I think there has to be some more work done, as I'm sure you'll be doing before we bring back a proposal, is I think now we're pivoting towards a different group, you know, such as, you know, folks who don't, you know, who don't, they're very different than the ones that we had the workshops for.
Absolutely.
Again, like a parent who is undocumented, and they may have certain defenses, but their road to stay here legally is a lot tougher than the people that were at these workshops. So, again, I don't, I did think it'd be really good to get a sense for who we're talking about helping.
Absolutely. What we can do is, we'll put together some options and then bring that back to the board to make some decisions on how you'd like to spend that money.
Any other questions? Supervisor Groom?
Mr. President, I'm unclear about what's being asked of us today. We're not going to authorize the funds today? Is that what I just heard?
I thought we were, but...
We're requesting that you do authorize the funds, but that we bring back a plan as to the actual expenditure of those funds.
Right.
Okay.
Again, I would comment that I don't see the underlying, you know, data supporting the funds. I would prefer to see that, because I'm not sure it's enough. Now, again, I don't know how many people we need to represent, and I don't know the caseload, I don't know the extent of the legal services that are needed, I don't know who's going to do the services. So, the number is somewhat, kind of a little bit out of the air. So, maybe it's right, maybe it's right, but it could be higher. I mean, some of the jurisdictions around us are spending considerably more, and I know we, you know, we're talking about, we're constrained, but it's pretty modest, actually. So, again, I don't feel I have the data to sign off on the number. So, I would prefer that you come back with a number that's supported by the data.
I have a whole bunch of public comments here, so unless you, Supervisor Groom, did you have a question? Supervisor Slocum?
No, I'd like to reserve my time toward the end.
You could, okay. Martin Fox, followed by Araceli Martinez Olguin?
Thank you again for your service to the county. I grew up in a bilingual family, in a bilingual home, in a bilingual town, and I'm the grandson of several sets of immigrants from different countries. So, and my wife has also been using the public library to teach people how to speak English, and I think that's another resource we should take a look at. It's probably already addressed this issue, and I'm sure Supervisor Groom can give you a complete briefing on that because of her hard work in the public library system. I also agree with Supervisor Pine, and I wanted to let you know again, Supervisor Horsey, I do read this thing, and I read all 91 pages of the University of Pennsylvania Law Review article, and discovered that the good that the lawyers did, that could be measured by the advocates who obviously wrote that paper, could only be done in the cases of asylum cases where they could track the representation. The weasel words that you will see is obtaining relief, and you can apply to obtain relief by simply picking up a telephone and asking that your hearing be continued. It's part of a process that can occur in either removal actions or in asylum actions. And the paper itself never addresses enforcement actions because no data was available. And I believe that what the issue you're dealing with here arises out of immigration enforcement actions. And so, I question the relevancy of the entire premise that lawyers are effective.
Thank you. Araceli Martinez Olguin, followed by Madre Langsotto.
Good afternoon. My name is Araceli Martinez Olguin, and I'm the senior immigrants' rights attorney with Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. For those of you unfamiliar with CLASP, we provide legal assistance to low-income individuals and families in East Palo Alto and the surrounding community. Our practice areas include immigration, housing, and economic advancement. We've provided legal assistance and advice to over 6,000 community members per, last year. I'm pleased to join the board today to support the proposed legal assistance fund. If approved, the fund will, at its core, keep more San Mateo County families together because, as you know, having legal counsel does make it many times more likely that an immigrant will successfully defend against deportation. And though we know that the legal assistance fund will help many families defend against the removal of one or more family members, we must also recognize that policies being formulated in Washington will only increase the need for those legal services because they threaten immigrants that the previous administration deemed low priority. And so, I would urge the board to begin considering additional allocations that will fully meet the needs of San Mateo families, perhaps to Supervisor Pine's point. That said, I'm not sure that, I would still suggest that you approve what you have on the table, because if anything, I think that the need will be greater rather than less than what you've already considered. I also want to comment that I'm heartened by the county's commitment to ensuring that all of its residents be able to access its services regardless of their level of English proficiency. CLASP hopes that in addition to surveying the county department's current practices, the county will also conduct outreach to community members with limited English proficiency to learn more about their experiences interacting, interfacing with the county, and seek community members' recommendations for making the departments more accessible. CLASP would welcome an opportunity to work with you all in that regard.
Extra comments? Madre Langsotto, followed by Stacy Hoever.
I don't know where we are now.
It's afternoon.
I'm Ana Langsotto. I'm the pastor of El Buen Pastor Episcopal Church in Redwood City. I also belong to the Migration and Immigration Task Force of the Episcopal Diocese of California, and have been involved in immigration issues sadly for about 20 years, trying to further what actually you all have been talking a lot about with regard to immigrant integration. First, I want to thank each of you for the work that you have done and are doing with regard to the community of immigrants, or I should say the communities, because the diversity is very rich in this area, and I just want to underscore that we're not talking only about Spanish speakers. I think that the programs that you've outlined are just perfect, and I prepared some other things to say, but I think that maybe what I could add that would be of use right now is to underscore that this is a time of crisis in the community. And one thing that Araceli said that I thought was interesting is that just as the welcome resolution from last month gave people a sense that they were being welcomed here and that they were welcome here, I think that passing the resolution today with the thought that there may need to be some follow-up resolutions would give a very strong message to ethnic communities that are in great fear right now. Amen.
Perfect ending. Stacy Seehofer, followed by Thomas Weismiller.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Monti, Mr. Byers. I'm Stacy Hoever with the Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. I know it's already been a long morning, so I'll be brief. I wanted to address a couple of the points that came up in the earlier discussion regarding the funding for legal services specifically. From what I can tell so far, it appears that the money that is in the resolution that's before you is a straight-up repurposing of money that was in the past fiscal year used for exclusively for workshops. So, moving all of that kind of whole hog over to eviction, or sorry, eviction, I've been doing multiple things today, over to removal defense is kind of a 180 shift, which is not a bad thing, but I just wanted to put in, I guess, promote the idea that there's a wide range of legal services that's needed for immigrants in this world today, and probably having all of one and nothing of the other is, might not be the most efficient way to get at this. I do think this is incredibly important. This is a piece that has not been funded by the county at all before, the removal defense piece, and is very important. But some of the workshops that have been done with the Measure A funding in the past have included not just citizenship, but as one we did last night at a church in San Mateo, hosted by Catholic Charities, was just a general Know Your Rights workshop followed by brief consultations with attorneys on a wide range of potential forms of relief. So, I think it's all necessary, it's all part of a bigger whole, and we look forward to continuing dialogue with the county about what all these needs are and are really happy to see the county out there addressing them. So, thanks very much.
May I ask a question of Stacy?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. I was reading that, I guess in the last legislative section, if I have this right, there was a Senate bill passed, Senate Bill 873, that provided some state funding to go to legal service organizations to represent unaccompanied minors. I think there's legislation in the, pending now to, who knows whether it will pass, to provide more state money for some of the work that we're talking about here. So, could you comment on what the state has done and is thinking about doing? Because that would, that's another revenue source that we probably should keep in mind.
Yes. In terms of the unaccompanied minor, that was very specific funding for the group of, at a time when there was a big surge in Central American immigrants arriving, children specifically, and there was state funding to represent those people in removal proceedings, and that funding was renewed and is still existing. That obviously does not relate at all to some of the populations that Professor Jimenez was talking about, who are longtime residents of San Mateo County, who previously weren't really targets of immigration enforcement and now will be in the future we anticipate.
But do you receive a flow, some flow of money from the state that will continue to represent unaccompanied minors? Is that just, was that just for that one time? It's gone?
Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto is actually the agency that receives most of that funding in the county, and it was renewed, I don't know what the end date is on it now. I know it was renewed once.
I don't know, Kander, I just started at CLASP too. I don't provide direct services, so I'm not aware.
Okay. In any event, I think...
There've been two rounds of funding from the state for the unaccompanied minor population. I think there was some drop in entrance for a while, but actually, you know, on the whole, it's remained pretty steady. So, I think they're hopeful that that will remain. I don't know about new funding. I don't think the new, is it SB 6? The new bill has actually done anything, has gotten anywhere so far.
It's under consideration.
Right.
So, I guess my point would be to staff that when this comes back, we ought to have a little description of those state sources. And then, just also, since you, you know, raised the question about don't cut out the things we were doing in the past, just so everyone's clear, you know, we are going to keep, the proposal is to keep $70,000 to represent, I think, tenants in housing areas. So, that's going to remain. What was, what Eliana Rodriguez has proposed is, we spent a very modest amount on veterans' workshops that, according to the information she sent me, had incredibly small number of people attend, so she's proposing that that go to zero. The housing would be essentially what it was last time, and then every, so it's not really throwing everything out. It's a reallocation, a little bit here, a little bit there.
Anything else? Thank you.
Turn my mic off.
President Horsey and members of the board. I oppose taxpayer-funded representation to those who face civil legal issues. Free legal representation is generally unavailable to citizens or legal aliens who face civil legal issues, such as foreclosures, eviction notices, child custody cases, or divorce proceedings. Providing free legal representation to illegal aliens is therefore unfair to citizens and legal residents who are required to pay out of their pockets their own civil legal proceeding. Taxpayer-funded civil legal representation could put us on a slippery slope for a number of issues. I encourage the board to oppose taxpayer-funded representation on civil legal issues. Thank you.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. Let me just begin, if I could, by thanking Irving Torres of my staff, who, along with county counsel and Mr. Callagie, and the professor, and Ms. Hartenstein, all put their heads together and worked on this. I appreciate all the work that went into this. I think our, there were three recommendations here. One is this Office of Community Affairs, two is the legal fund, and three is the language access policy, if I'm not mistaken. And I kind of thought what we were going to do was develop an RFP, if you will, for these legal services. And I would suggest that perhaps since Supervisor Pine and I have been talking about that in the past, that perhaps we could form, with our colleagues' approval, just an ad hoc group to work with Eliana or whomever's going to be involved in this, to craft that RFP so we could get at some of the specifics that I know we all have concerns about regarding, is the number 276,000 right? Should it be higher? Should it be lower? And who are we going to serve? And those kind of details. The second part is that perhaps, and I don't mean to volunteer people, but it's just to kind of kickstart us, but perhaps Supervisor Cannepa and I, because of our districts and the population numbers and language access numbers that were shared earlier, perhaps we could form an ad hoc group to help staff with the language access... we could form an ad hoc group to help staff with the language access policies that would work for the diversity of District 5, the diversity of District 4, and of course, the coast and the other areas of San Mateo and Burlingame. Yeah. Sorry, what were you going to say?
No, there are two different ad hoc committees that you've just created or want to create.
Yeah. And I guess it's the president's prerogative, so I would certainly defer to your leadership and direction on this.
Is there a third one we can create?
You know, no, we can't. So that's sort of a way forward that I see, to work with Iliana and staff, Supervisor Pine, Supervisor Slocum on the money part and the specifics of the program. And then number two, language access policy that gets hopefully created at some point by Supervisor Canepa and myself. And I think that can all work quite nicely for all of us. So with that, I'll stop.
So there would be two ad hoc committees, Supervisors Canepa and Slocum on language access policy, and a second ad hoc committee with Supervisor Pine and Supervisor Slocum on legal services.
Yeah. If there's no objection.
I might suggest if that is-
That is a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to make, that is a motion.
Thank you, yes, that was going to be my suggestion.
Is there a second for that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And let's go back now to the actual agenda item here. I heard some recommendations. Do we actually go ahead with at least the allocation of funding? No? We didn't hear that?
Yeah, just for clarification, I think the funding, regardless of what it is, would start County Manager Malp on July 1. So there's no need to allocate anything now because we don't spend anything. So we'll come back and have it all right before July 1.
So we're not going to need to deal with this item now? We can, it'll come back.
On the amount of the legal fund, yes.
As well as-
Well, President Horstley, what I thought I heard Supervisor Slocum say was that with the formation of these ad hoc committees, they would flush out details, and then the whole thing would come back with a more formal package with details and allocations and recommendations about how to do an RFP and all of that.
Mr. President, what I would suggest is that the board act on the creation of the office and leave the other two items for subsequent action by the board, probably in June, that would be my guess.
Okay. So do we want to make a motion on the creation of the office?
Yes.
You want me to do that?
Yeah.
It was your idea.
Let me make a motion, if I could, to approve the creation of the Office of Community Affairs, and I think that's it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, done. So now we'll go on to board members' reports. Supervisor Grubbe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourned memories today, and they are both quite sad. Tim Foley, who was the Executive Director of the Easter Seal Society, early on headquartered in Burlingame, passed away on March 8. He's survived by his sons, Patrick and Timothy and Michael, and his daughter Joan, as well as his nine grandchildren. He was an amazing person, taking kind of an old-fashioned, not-for-profit, and creating it into a real dynamo for people with disabilities. And I had the privilege of serving on that board for a number of years and knew Tim well. And when I saw this in the newspaper the other day, I just thought, oh my goodness, you know, a real leader leaving us way too early. And the second one is the same story. Lisa Dwyer, who has been one of San Mateo County's more prominent obstetricians and gynecologists and has probably delivered more babies at Mills Peninsula than anybody else ever had, also has had a very untimely death. She died on April, March 25 of this year, at very young, 58 years old. And she died of cancer, and it was interesting because she treated so many cancer patients herself. And so these are just two great losses for this community, and I would ask us to adjourn in their memory.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind everybody that on Tuesday, April 4, at the Foster City Rec. Center, we will be doing our next Age Well, Drive Smart Seminar. And then also on April 15 and April 22, we'll be doing the Jobs Youth Summit, which is a pretty exciting endeavor. I think we have 120 job-aged youth signed up. And the goal, of course, is to find summer jobs for young people in San Mateo County. Finally, I have an adjourned memory, which is a veteran who passed away at the age of Mr. Carl Clark lived in Bellhaven, and he was involved in the attack of Pearl Harbor. He was a survivor. He subsequently got deployed to a destroyer in the Pacific. And that destroyer was bombarded by six Japanese kamikaze planes who attacked, you know, crashed the airplanes into his ship. The ship caught fire. There were explosions. A lot of people lost their lives. And Mr. Clark, single-handedly saved a number of people's lives. And in fact, the captain of the ship later said that it was because of his efforts that the ship didn't sink, that he basically saved the ship from going down. And since Mr. Clark was a black man, he never received any recognition from the Veterans' Department, the Department of Defense, or anybody. And the story is that he was in the Menlo Park Library, and he took a writing class at the library. And the assignment was, I guess, for veterans to write about their particular stories. And Mr. Clark wrote his story out at that library and turned it into the teacher. The teacher read it and said, oh my God, here's a war hero who for 66 years has been neglected the recognition that he deserved. So the teacher turned the story over to Congresswoman Anna Eshu, and she went to work for a couple of years on getting him his recognition, his medals. And it was complicated by the fact that a fire in a warehouse destroyed his records, and so it was quite a lengthy ordeal. But in any case, Mr. Clark in 2012 at Moffett Field, I think we might have, we were there. We were there. Not that it matters, but we were there. And the Secretary of the Navy came and gave Mr. Clark and his family the Navy and Marine Corps Commendation Medal with Combat Distinguishing Device for his heroism during World War II in 1945 aboard the USS Aaron Ward. So Mr. Clark passed away recently. As I said, he was 100 years old, and he was a resident of Bellhaven, right here in San Mateo County. Wow. Thank you.
Nice story. Supervisor Pine?
Nothing today.
Supervisor Canepa? Okay, we have Service Awards at 1:30, and we'll be back at 2:30.
Okay, we're back from the Service Awards, and we're back in open session. And we are now at item number seven, which is the recommendation to accept the county's recommended five-year capital improvement plan, and recommendations on the five-year IT improvement plan as well. So, Mr. Callagie, you were presenting today?
I am kicking off today. Good afternoon, President Horstley, members of the board, Mr. Malp, Mr. Byers, and Mr. Sacco. This presentation that you're about to hear is really the culmination of four master plans/ feasibilities, which this board asked us to undertake in the last year. So it represents the county campus master plan, the medical center master plan, South San Francisco jail feasibility study site, the Tower Road master plan. And we'll just touch on, just briefly, the Middlefield Junction feasibility study that's underway now, just by way of information. We're not asking for any direction on that today. This is, as you can look around, an incredible undertaking, and you'll receive an incredible amount of information today. And we'll be asking for some direction on how to proceed on some of these proposals. One of the things that we will not be presenting on today, but I want to assure you is a high, high priority with us, and that is the homeless shelter. And that is because we really haven't worked out the site yet. But we plan on doing that in the very near future, and as soon as we do that, we'll be coming back to the board to get direction on that. So let me move forward here. We're obviously talking about capital projects. The agenda, let me just go through this very quickly. The Project Development Unit will present first. And what they'll present are the existing projects that are underway, there's four of them, and that are funded. And then they'll go into the new projects. And then Mr. Sacco will talk about the budget for those new projects. After that, we'll talk about the Middlefield Junction housing, just very briefly. And then the sheriff will talk about their proposal for Old McGuire. And then we'll go to the Capitol for Department of Public Works and Parks, and then after that, to IT. So a lot of information, and that is the way we'll present it. If you want to stop after the Project Development Unit and after you hear the budget there and give direction, that's fine. Or if you want to continue and hear it all, that's fine also. So with that, I will turn it over to Doug Koenig, who's the interim director of the Project Development Unit.
Good afternoon, President Horstley, members of the board, Mr. Malp, Mr. Byers, Mr. Sacco. As you can see on this slide, it shows the master plan sites and the specific projects that the Project Development Unit will be presenting today. They're located throughout the county, from a potential new county health hub in South San Francisco, to a replacement fire station in Pescadero, to a potential build-out of the government center here in Redwood City. First, looking at projects currently underway, the Regional Operations Center, so 36,000 square foot facility, be the future home of the 911 Public Service Communications, as well as the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. It will also house an ISD data center and an emergency operations center, which, when not activated, can be used as a conference and training center for the county. That EOC space is about 40% larger than Room 101. Current status, a $31 million design build contract was awarded in October of '15. Currently, they have received Redwood City permits for off-site construction, which is supposed to start this week. They're also conducting continued site remediation due to contamination from the underground storage tanks. Their construction permits for the main structure are pending, and we anticipate its completion is late spring of 2018. Also under construction, Skyline Fire Station. This project replaces an office structure and a barrack structure that were built in 1939, as well as the detached apparatus bays. The new structure will feature attached apparatus bays, which are important because they reduce the response time. These apparatus bays will also be of the drive-through type, which is much safer for the firemen. They don't need to back up their apparatus. And another feature, important feature, will be a new access to Skyline Drive, which will also improve response times and safety for the firemen, as well as members of the general public. The $6.2 million design build contract was awarded in September of 2015. Construction is well underway. The foundation is complete, and they're currently framing the second floor. And we expect completion in late fall of this year. The animal shelter, recently approved. This project replaces an existing animal control facility that is well beyond its useful life. It's going to provide a more efficient layout, which will allow for reduced building size. It includes an HVAC system that can deliver 12 air exchanges per hour of 100% outside air, which is important for animal health and will reduce animal odors. And it'll also feature a reduced number of animals per kennel run, which reduces the stress level of the animals being housed. This $19.7 million contract was awarded last month to F&amp;H Construction. Design development is currently underway, and we do expect construction to start in late summer. The contractor has two years to complete this project. What'd we do? Did I do that? Okay, cash flow and budget, put things in perspective, give you an idea of how much money is already committed to current projects. And you can see this is just shy of $100 million. Okay, at this time, we're going to start talking about potential future projects, which is the main reason we're here today. And I will turn it over to Sam Lynn, who will talk about our plans for development at the San Mateo Medical Center.
Good afternoon, supervisors. I will talk about the San Mateo Medical Center campus, our assessment and our recommendation. If we could turn to the next slide. Yes, thank you. So as we're all aware of, the state OHPAD has a mandate that, two deadlines, by 2020, all the hospital and structural items need to be upgraded to meet current seismic code. And then by 2030, all the structural components need to meet the seismic code by then. And so to comply with the OHPAD requirements, the county has retained a team of architects and engineers to assess how much and how extensive it's going to cost the county to continue to improve the 1954 portion of the hospital. And the initial structural-related upgrade, we have come up with a rough magnitude of orders between $46 million to $50 million. And that's just the structural components alone. And because this was a building with 63 years of span, there's a lot of deficiency on the structural, and so a lot of concrete shield walls needs to be spread out all over the footprint, from the bottom to the top. So not only we have to go in and vacate the whole space during the construction, but we also, after the upgrade, we have to renovate the space because many hallways are in way of the circulation and what have you. And that becoming a very heavy price tag. And not only that, Health System, two years ago, retained a traffic consultant to make a study on, because as you're aware of, there's a significant shortage of parking space on the side of the wells, the neighborhood. And the conclusion is that if we maintain the status quo, not doing any improvement at all, we will need to build a parking garage to house 615 parking space, because to deal with the shortage of 400 parking space. The architect and the Health System staff and our unit then assess what can be done differently by avoiding continuous investment in 54. And we come up with a different option, which is to resolve the current traffic congestion and also to avoid continuing to invest in the 54 building because of its reach and of lifespan. And in essence, we'll come up with a five-step process. Number one is that we'll go into the nursing wing at hospital. The space there on the ground floor has been idle for the last 10 years. We repurpose that portion of the hospital, and by renovation, that to incorporate major function out of 54, to make that a very functional hospital. And after doing that, then we'll come back to decommission and demolish- to decommission and demolish 54, which is around 190,000 square footage of space. And once we demolish that building at the new urgent and footprint, we'll build a new office building, non-OSHPA office building, to accommodate office space and some of the labs and morgue, et cetera. And after that, then we'll go back to demolish Health Service Building. And the final step is that, after all this old building being demolished, new building being erected, then we'll come back and redo the whole site to accommodate more parking space, more greener pasture, more welcoming entrance from the 37th Avenue to the main entrance to the hospital, as well as the new office building. So the whole site can be more patient and employee and neighborhood friendly. So, I'm going to show you the raw cost comparison. On your left is that if we were to continue to upgrade 54, structural upgrade alone is about $46 million. Space renovation to deal with that as a byproduct of the renovations is about $20.5 million. Health Service Building demolition is about $4 million. Parking structure to accommodate 615 parking spaces is about $26.3. And then, two different phases of the people shuffling, the lease space, and, you know, trying to do all this complicated logistic management is another $30 million. So, continuing to invest 54 is going to cost county about $110 million ballpark. So, the second option, which we recommend, is to decommission 54, as well as the Health Service Building, by creating a new office building, roughly 70,000 square footage, as well as renovate the nursing wing ground floor. By doing that, we also remove 64 beds as well, and that is a little bit under $100 million. So, that's our recommendation to your board. Thank you. Yes?
Is that picture of?
Yes, that's the picture. The top is the yellow, which is showing the current, on the top is your 54 three dimension. At the bottom is your Health Service footprint, and it's three stories, some portion is two-story with the basement. And the next one below, the purple, is a schematic. It may not be that way, depends on the architects and us to come up with a creative solution. But you can tell that by removing all the aging facility, we would be able to put more greenery to the side, more parking space, and major entrance would be coming from the 37th Avenue, making a more grandiose entrance to the hospital.
Any questions, Audit? Supervisor Pyne?
I had one question. Thanks for your presentation. So, you know, comparing these two options, the top one with the yellow, with the 54 upgrade, you know, that whole total complex, the square footage there is quite a bit larger, right, than the bottom one?
Right, right.
Do you know that, how do those two square footages compare?
Sure, sure. I'll talk about that. On the yellow building block, the 1954 on the top is about 109,000 square footage, and the Health Service Building is about, if you include in the basement, is about 70,000 square footage.
How much?
70,000.
70?
70,000, including roughly 5,000 to 6,000 square footage of basement space.
So, under the?
Under the new scheme, it's about, we'll cap at 70,000 square footage for the new building.
So, with the purple scheme?
Yes.
Does that scheme assume, then, that Health Department personnel will be relocated to County Center?
Right. So, right now, the 54 is primarily hospital administration and, you know, the kitchen and all those critical components to serve the hospital. And then service, Health Service is primarily Health System staff, you know, and administration, the IT, the financial service, and what have you. So those are the primary target to move to other county office building. Could be, we actually forecast about 40,000 square footage of occupants can be relocated to the future COB-3, if COB-3 being the build.
So, approximately how many medical staff or Health System staff would have to be put in other places?
During the construction?
No. Once it's, if you went ahead and did the purple, is it 100, 200? Employees that are now on the Medical Center, it'd have to be someplace else, right?
Right.
Do you know how many that is?
So, roughly, 40,000 would come to COB-3, so that's about, close to, I would say, neighborhood of 500 people, is that sounds right?
Okay, well, I mean, it's a substantial number.
Yeah, it's a very substantial, yes.
It's hundreds.
Right. Right now, the whole campus there, I believe, is close to 1,000 employees at the campus.
Which in turn, and that brings the parking demand down.
Right, that's correct.
Any other questions? Did you say, Sam, did you say the food service goes someplace else, or?
Yeah, food service would go to the, our current plan is going to the ground floor of the nursing wing, because it's been empty. There's a nice courtyard, there's an easy access from the, I believe, from the street. So, that's our recommendation, from the 37th, 37th Avenue, yeah. So, it's coming.
The kitchen goes over there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Supervisor Grubbs?
I was just going to make a comment for all of you. This is just going to make such a difference in the neighborhood. We will, you know, with the, especially with the green space, it will be such a relief for the people that not just live on 37th, but live up on Hacienda and over on 39th. And so, they, we've had a number of community meetings, and the neighbors have been brought along for this, and I think that they're going to be really pleased when this is finally finished.
The old building is really poorly designed, and it's like a rabbits' warren. Never mind.
Supervisor Horsley, if I can answer your question more directly, you were asking about the kitchen. The kitchen that would go in the nurse's wing would only be the backup kitchen that's required by OSHPA. So it would not, the current kitchen would not go over there.
And I said, that's actually going to be at Maple Street? Is that, or?
No, but that's something we may be looking at in the future.
Okay.
After touring the Maple Street, you know, cooking facilities, they're pretty impressive. That's something I think we should definitely think about.
Probably could. Do you want to go to the next project?
Maybe we'll talk about the next project.
I'm already blowing it. Okay, what do I do? Good afternoon. I want to talk briefly about the new COB-3, and I wanted to let you know that a comprehensive study was done, and the team made up of a multiple of county departments, leadership, the Board of Supervisors, and county administration. It was collaborative, and what we really wanted to do was build consensus to make a final recommendation that clearly articulated our purpose and reflected our county needs. One of the things that floated to the top was an opportunity to create a state-of-the-art government center. But most important, the most important thing, was to improve access to the county facility, the county building here. Make it more approachable, more inviting, and ease of access to navigate the county building. The other benefit will be to relocate the selected departments, as Sam mentioned earlier, from the Medical Center, to really decompress that facility up there. I think the other thing that we could have an opportunity was to really benefit our employees. I think you just came from service awards, and there's probably at least one 30-year vet, I would imagine, receiving an award. It's an opportunity to promote better efficiency through our environment, and so creating and improve the workplace environments for employees. We've already engaged the courts. Our idea would be to take the traffic court site in part, move the traffic court folks into the new Hall of Justice. The Hall of Justice, by the way, the building we're in right now was constructed in 1954. Coincidentally, the same year of the building we're proposing to tear down. So it'd be really great to actually construct a new county office building. It is also an opportunity for us to relocate the Sheriff's Office. We'd like the Sheriff's Office, I'm doing something wrong again. It's an opportunity to move them into the McGuire and hopefully create a headquarters for them, again, freeing up space for the courts to move into this facility. With that, we'll be relocating the Lathrop House. The Lathrop House, we'd like to move to behind the domed courtroom. It has been moved twice before, and our idea is to go ahead and relocate it there. I've been working with Mitch Postal and his team, and he has some great opportunities and ideas for creating potentially a carriage barn as well, so when you tour the facility, hopefully increasing the visitors to the Lathrop House, and then again, making way for us to construct a new county office building. With the office building, I forgot to mention, we did evaluate kind of a small, medium, and large, and what we're proposing today is that mid-size version. With that does come a parking structure. With the parking structure, you'll notice that there's a huge swag in the numbers, and the reason there is that big of a gap or, you know, distance between the two is that we may or may not have some opportunities with Redwood City and a potential lease opportunity. So we kept it very wide. Once we come to you in a formal way for funding, we will certainly have that narrowed down. But what this slide really wanted to depict here and show that, really, the interconnection between these projects that we're bringing forth today. As we've mentioned, the Medical Center, we do need to decompress that site, in turn, take 40,000 square feet off that site, build them, and potentially put them into the new COB-3, moving the Lathrop House, and then, of course, that does impact into the need for a new parking structure. It will take about 18 months to construct a new parking structure, which we know is pretty top priority because it's difficult to park today. Any questions? Thank you.
Honorable Board, good afternoon. This slide has been incorporated to provide you with a breakdown of the scenario that would be created should it be determined that a COB-3 would not be built at this time. And this slide will draw your attention to three specific points. First is 801 Gateway located in South San Francisco, which currently consists of just under 30,000 square feet of Health System Administration staff. And as you will see over the next 10 years, the cost, the lease cost at that facility will be just over $12 million. The second location, excuse me, is 264 Harbor, which is located at Harbor Park. Currently, that facility houses our Housing Department, and that consists of just over 16,000 square feet. And the Housing Department, as it does not receive state or federal reimbursement for their operating expenses, is an ideal candidate to move to, eventually move to a county-owned facility. The last bullet on here that will draw your attention to is the Medical Center Health System Administration here. And as we've discussed in prior slides, some of the staff that would be relocated from 37th Avenue would come to, possibly come to a COB-3. The rest of the staff would need to be relocated to lease space if a COB-3 wasn't built. So this accounts for that staff that's been discussed as coming to COB-3, and this is about 40,000 square feet. Ideally, due to the services provided, it would be preferred that the staff be in the city of San Mateo, due to the services that they provide being connected to the Medical Center. And if we were to lease space in San Mateo, then the asking rate right now for a full-service lease is about $4.55 in San Mateo. Over 10 years for the needed space, that would cost just over $25 million. So you'll see, over the next 10 years, it would be just under $42 million in lease costs, and these are ongoing expenses. So if a COB-3 was not to be built, then these expenses, these leases, would need to be renewed and continued so that we could, we, the county, could continue to provide the necessary services. So these, while the lease cost there is $42 million, these are ongoing costs. And so, with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions? Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. I actually wanted to ask Ms. Bazana a question.
Absolutely.
Or you could answer it, perhaps. I was curious, I recall in the past that Councilmember Ian Bane from Redwood City had come here and talked to us about moving the Lathrop House to the historic district, as I recall. And I'm wondering, have you included Redwood City in this conversation?
Never. I actually have talked to Redwood City and Aaron Atkins is his name, and then I've also been engaging Barbara Pierce with Mitch Postal. So again, nothing has been done in a formal way with Redwood City. I really wanted to take your pulse first to make sure that you're okay with it, and then in a formal way, we'll talk to Redwood City. There's a lot to moving a historical house. I'm learning quickly. So we have to engage the Office of Interiors and a few other departments, so it may take a little bit longer than we had hoped, but it's pretty detailed and exciting.
By formal, you mean the council, or do you mean something else?
Probably have to do both, I would imagine, yeah. We might have to do a presentation to them.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pyne?
A question for the team. So if we built COB-3 and we renovated Old McGuire, and what county functions, putting aside the courts, would be left, if any, in this Hall of Justice building?
So, through the President, Supervisor Pyne, what would move into here, essentially on this floor here, actually, in the county manager's offices, would be the traffic court? So, all other functions would stay in this building that are currently here now for the courts, if a COB-3 was built. So only the traffic function, we would need that land that would come into this area here.
But, for example, so the sheriff, would all the sheriff personnel be out of the building? I think so.
That's correct.
And then would county council and others move into COB-3? In other words, it sounds like there would be no, you know, County, San Mateo County people in here, there'd just be court people.
Well, yeah, so we would still have the probation floor, we still would have the DA office here. That space where the sheriff is right now could be used in a multiple, multiple different ways, as flex space or expansion space for some of the existing departments right now. But those other departments would stay here.
Okay, that's, of course, that's right. Because you'll have to remind me, because we have this, you know, some kind of arrangement with the court, where we're responsible for certain, like 52% of this building or something like that.
Right.
And it doesn't sound like we'll be needing 52%, though, if we build all these other...
Through the President, if I could attempt to answer that with Mike. Essentially, we've condominiumized the building in an agreement with the state. The court has 48%, we have 52%. We will continue our ownership of 52%. We will not abandon our ownership unless the courts want to pay for that ownership. We will find appropriate functions to fill the space that would be vacated in those areas in which people would move into COB-3.
Yeah, that's where I was getting at, in that, so we still, you know, have the 52% condominium interest, and we would, there'd be some county functions that would use that 52%.
Yes, yeah. We would have to bring an exact plan back to you, once the details, if the board approves this in concept, to really get to who's going to be where and when. But we would continue to occupy that space in some sense.
And then, you know, at a minimum, if we built everything proposed, the sheriff's space would then be available, because they would be...
That would be, that would be correct, and as would the space in the basement.
Yeah, okay, I got it. So we will still be putting people in here in some departments, I guess.
Yes.
We build all these things.
Yeah. I suggest that we go through the rest of the projects that the project development unit is working on, and then we'll take them all, we'll kind of separate...
development unit is working on. And then we'll take them all, kind of, we'll kind of separate the other projects for IT and in parks and public works. So why don't you go ahead, Doug?
We'd be talking about, going to be the Cordillares project.
Cordillares.
And we'd talk about the master plan activities at North County and at Tower Road.
Yeah.
That'd pretty much wrap it up. Okay, Cordillares. This project replaces a sixty-five-year-old, one-hundred-and-seventeen-bed psychiatric facility with a campus that meets the modern standards of care for, for seriously mentally ill residents. The one-hundred, roughly one-hundred-thousand-square-foot project is made up of five of the mental health recovery centers, each about ten-thousand square feet. Each can accommodate sixteen residents for a total of eighty, which is an increase of twelve over the current capacity. The other structure would be a four-story campus center with the bottom floor providing the administrative and logistical support for the campus and three, three floors of, of supportive housing, that each floor to accommodate nineteen residents for a total of fifty-seven. That's an increase of eight over the current capacity. Your board approved the feasibility of this project in November two thousand fourteen. In February of two thousand fifteen, you approved the architect's contract to, to develop the bridging documents. And you also authorized the design-build-delivery method. Since that time, we've completed the bridging documents. We've completed the RFQ and the RFP process. And we've received one proposal last month from Stronghold Engineering. And staff is evaluating that proposal at this time. Once awarded, the project will have to be constructed in phases over about a three-and-a-half-year period, primarily due to the challenging site conditions and the environmental constraints.
Okay. Any questions?
The South San Francisco Health System Hub. The master planning architect evaluated two options for development of the North County Court Site. The first was a full build-out of the site to create a multi-service healthcare and county service complex. The price tag on that was somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety to one-hundred-and-ten million. The second option that they developed was this less ambitious deductive scheme, which is shown here. The new health system hub would provide express care, primary and specialty care, as well as dental and optometry care. It would also offer behavioral health and recovery services. The Tower Road Master Plan, the objective of this study was to take a comprehensive look at, at reorganizing and modernizing county facilities out at Tower Road. In addition, the architect was asked to determine the feasibility of relocating the Grant Yard, Corporate Yard, from Redwood City to the, to the Tower Road area. Now, although the planner concluded that that wasn't feasible, they did identify certain, the radio shop had to vacate the county center to make room for the, the ROC, or the Regional Operations Center. It's currently in leased facilities with the ISD Data Center on Marshall Road. And we need to find a, an alternative for that by the time that the, that the ROC is available for the ISD Data Center to move into. Looking at the overall program, cash flows and budget, I'll turn this over to Jim.
Good afternoon, members of the board. So I was going to break this down, actually, and talk about the fiscal impacts. If we do the four projects on the top, which are the, the medical center, campus, the parking structure, the Lathrop House, and COB three. And then I'll talk about the overall costs for all seven projects. As you can see, the total outlay for all seven projects is three-hundred-and-sixty-one-point-eight million. If the county were to finance the three projects and move the Lathrop House, ultimately, you'd be looking at, and again, we're talking over two years and also the issuance of bonds. Bridge funding would total sixty-five-point-four million, including five and a, five and a half million from the general fund and about fifty-nine-point-nine, almost sixty million from Circle Star proceeds. The total financing would approximate a hundred-and-sixty-five million dollars. Annual debt service would be nine-point-two million dollars. And again, the Lathrop House relocation would be funded with Measure K, nine-hundred thousand. If the board were to decide to finance and move forward with all five projects, so that would be the health system campus, parking structure, COB three, Cordillares, and the health campus, as well as the, the relocation of the Lathrop House and the radio shop, the new radio shop. We're looking at bridge funding of eighty-point-four million, which is about twenty-point-five million from the general fund and sixty million from Circle Star proceeds. Total financing of three-hundred million with annual debt service at sixteen-point-five million dollars. And again, Lathrop House relocation would be pay-as-you-go, nine-hundred thousand for Measure K. And the radio shop would be four-point-three million, which would be about three-point-four million from Circle Star and nine-hundred-and-forty thousand from Prop One Seventy-Two. The three-point-three-six million in Circle Star money is already appropriated. So that's not a new appropriation.
Jim, this isn't in the slide, right?
I'm reading off of my notes.
Okay. Could we could, maybe you could distribute that to us. It's pretty hard to follow you without.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah. Yeah, we do have a, well, we have a little bit of a recap, I think, at the end of the presentation, but that's later on down the road. But again, I think, I think ultimately, what you're looking at is, to summarize, is if, if we go with the top, the first four projects, you're looking at sixty-five million in bridge funding and a financing of a hundred-and-sixty-five million. And if we go with all of the projects, we're looking at about eighty million in bridge funding and a three-hundred-million-dollar financing.
Could you go over that last part again?
Yeah. If we do the first three, it's a hundred-and-sixty-five-million-dollar financing and sixty-five million in bridge funding.
And what does that mean, bridge funding?
That's, so what would happen is, is that we wouldn't really be in a position to go out for debt service probably until next summer. So it'd be the beginning of eighteen-nineteen. So it'd be, that bridge funding is the amount of money that we would spend over the next two years. And then the board would, my recommendation would be, as we go out for the financings, we do reimbursement resos. Doesn't mean you have to reimburse yourself for those costs, but we leave open the option of reimbursing ourselves for the outlay of funds, the, you know, the, the out-of-pocket costs. Include that in the financing. I don't know that I would do all of that because I don't know if we want to reimburse the Circle Star and create a negative arbitrage situation. But I think you have to look at it because you want to make sure the county's cash remains solvent. So, so there's a potential of, my numbers include some reimbursement of, of out-of-pocket expenses in the financings. If you just, if you go with all five projects, you're talking, basically, the financing's almost double. It goes from one-sixty-five to three-hundred. The debt service goes from nine million a year to sixteen and a half million a year.
It goes from ninety to what?
It goes from nine, a little over nine million a year to sixteen and a half million a year. And again, we have some bankers out in the audience who probably know better than me. What I based these on was what they call three-point-seven-five percent all-in true interest cost out of thirty-year fixed financing, which I think the county can do with our triple-A rating.
I'm sorry, if you could just forgive me here. On the first three, it's a hundred-and-sixty-five million of financing. And how much is just?
Oh, I see. They brought the slide up for us. This might help you. You can, so let me, thank you for doing this, Sukie. So if you look at this, this is kind of a, unfortunately, this is a summary of all the projects, which includes parks and everything. But if you really focus on PDU, the five-year plan for PDU is four-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand all-in. That's all their projects, including the four projects that they mentioned that are already underway. If you'd.
What's the PDU?
The Project Development Unit. That's Deb Bazan and Doug Conning.
So that's, that's five buildings plus the other ones that we've already started.
That includes the ROC and the fire stations. But if you take out those projects, which, if you remember, the first slide showed ninety-nine million, the new projects total three-hundred-and-fifty-seven million. So the seven buildings that we're talking about, the, the seven projects that are brand-new, the total outlay for those projects is three-hundred-and-fifty-seven million. We're proposing essentially to finance three-hundred million of that.
Okay. And on the, and on the, on the, if we just did the three, what's the total?
It would be a hundred-and-sixty-five million. And you had the slide, Sukie. It was there.
I'm sorry.
No, go back to where you were. Oh, Sam.
I think some of us are not following this at all, the.
I'm sorry. Sam, could you go back to this? You had this, you were one slide away from the one I wanted to show next.
Okay.
Okay. Go one more slide, please. I'm trying to compartmentalize this for you. Okay, so let's think first on cash outlay. If you go with the three, the four projects, the out-of-pocket costs in the next two years is going to be sixty-five million dollars. If you go with all seven projects, the out-of-pocket costs are going to be eighty million. Okay? So just think about those two things.
That's not there.
Not there.
Well, no, I, yeah, that, what I'm saying isn't on the slides.
No, it's not.
Let us summarize what Jim has and get it to you offline, because Jim is really reading from his notes. And it relates to these, but you, not exactly, so that you could see how the cash flow and how the financing work over the four projects and the seven projects.
Yeah, sorry.
I mean, I think there's this, there's one, I think there's one number that you could answer. If we did the three, the big three, how much does it cost to do the three, all money? You said it's a hundred-and-sixty-five million of financing, but there's, is that what, there's some other money, right?
Yeah, you would, you would, there would be, there'd be sixty-five million dollars in out-of-pocket costs.
I don't know what out.
Five and a half million.
I just remember total.
It'd be sixty-five million out-of-pocket.
How much does it cost?
And then you would finance a hundred-and-sixty-five. So.
Can I add those two numbers?
I'm, I'm sorry.
It's about two-hundred million.
Stop, stop for a minute, stop for a minute.
What does out-of-pocket cost mean?
What I mean by that is, it's the amount of money you're spending before you finance the project.
Okay, all right.
You said before that was bridge money that would get paid back.
Same thing. Sorry, it's the same thing.
So the simple, maybe I just put it really simply. Forget how you, where the money comes from and how you finance it. How much does it cost in total to build the three? Just one number. How much did it cost to build in total the, the seven?
It's two-hundred-and-twenty-four million.
And it's three-hundred-and-fifty-seven for them all?
Three-sixty-one.
Okay.
Jim, I think that slide's up right now.
Yeah, I know. I just got the numbers from it. Thank you.
Okay, there it is.
So can we, let's go back to, first of all, let me take questions one at a time. Did you have some supervisor?
I just didn't know what out-of-pocket meant.
Okay.
It's not, it's not like the change that we carry around with us.
You should have stuck with the bridge funding.
Supervisor Slocum, do you have any questions? Supervisor Canepa, hey, let me just, one of the things that I am not real happy to see is Cordillares is off, looks as if we are not going to do that. I mean, I understand why, if we're going to do the medical center in the new building, the new master plan of the seventy-thousand-square-foot building, that kind of forces us into do COB three, essentially.
I think the, the, the plan here, and again, I apologize for the way the slides are laid out. But essentially, what, we think that all seven of these projects are moving forward. I think that, and Deb can speak to this, but I don't believe the PDU, I think the PDU believes that, that Cordillares is at least a year out because of environmental concerns. So that, which.
That's, one of the things I'd like to see is, you know, how are you going to stage this? I mean, if we take, for example, if you take down the buildings at, at the hospital, how, how do you stage this? Do we start COB three right away? Or what's the timeframe and how, what, what goes first?
I think if COB three were approved, that would, that would have to go first, that and the parking garage. Where the parking garage followed immediately.
So do you have like a schedule of how things, how you sequence these projects?
We, we don't have one today, but that, the idea was, the parking, of course, the parking, if you do COB three without the parking, that creates quite a bit of challenges. And we may be able to overcome those with off-site parking. But ideally, COB three would be available for agencies from the health department to move into to avoid the double move. So that would be, that would be the, the first step to, to avoid that. In the meanwhile, you still have a lot of things that you need to do at the medical center. You need, it will take probably a year and a half to, to, two years to get a permit to go in there and, and rip out the ground floor of the nursing wing to put in all of those essential services that have to be relocated. So, I mean, timing-wise, it, it can fit.
So have you got like a sequential diagram that shows how these are step-by-step?
Sure, Supervisor Horsley. The, the one that three has a deadline that we have to right, do right away is the campus, the, over at Medical Center. So that has a deadline that has to be done by two thousand twenty for demolish the fifty-four buildings. So that's the, the one that we have to proceed right away. Along with that, we want to move the Lathrop House to prepare for the space for the future COB three. Meanwhile, we know there's a, a big demand for the Redwood City parking, along with the partnership with Redwood City. They're pitching in the funding. So we know the seat, the, the garage will be the next in order. So once the Lathrop House relocated, meanwhile, we're building the garage. I would say probably a year from now, then we can start the design effort of the COB three. And it's a take one year to design and two years to complete. Meanwhile, on the Cordillares, we already have the, the proposal from one of the design builder. We'll continue to negotiate and make sure the contract is in the right place. But that project alone, because it has a lot of changes in the waterways, the, the, the water channel, the terrains. So that needs to go through a CEQA process, EIR, with the state agencies and the federal cop engineers. So that alone is going to take another year. And we'll, we'll probably, we'll look at three years beyond that. It's one year to these, fully design, another two years to do all the construction of the low-rise first, and then we start to populate out of the existing facility into the low-rise. And then we demolish the, the new building and do, do the, the new high-rise. So that's, that's the sequence of the Cordillares. And we, after talking with our budget director, we feel that South San Francisco campus, because of the, the overall bonding capacity, we would recommend to not to start the design until two thousand nineteen.
Supervisor Groom?
Oh, I was just going to ask about Cordillares, but Sam answered. I didn't know about the, I wondered what the environmental issues were.
Is that Army Corps and they?
Yeah, but he just.
It's a dry creek that goes underneath there.
Basin trouble, water, okay. So is, let me ask the next question. I mean, I happen to agree with Supervisor Horsley. I think the Cordillares facility is really important. And, and if we're not going to be able to start until two thousand nineteen, that probably means two thousand twenty-two, before we're in. I mean, can we wait that long? In, in, I mean, I, I mean, I know we take good care of our, of our folks, but we really want to have, we're really looking forward to the new design and the new living conditions. But can we wait that long, Sam?
It really depends on how the, you know, a lot of time, the EIR, the CEQA process is out of our control, especially this one involved the state water board and the different agencies and Army Corps engineering. So, so that, we estimate, and by talking to our environmental consultant, I think it's about nine months to a year at least. So that's, that's really the hinging factor. If we can shorten that, I'm sure we can expedite the design portion as well as the construction.
If I could just further add to Sam's comment to Supervisor Groom. Relating to the existing facility, which I think is what your comment was, was directed to, it's a very old facility, but it has been well-maintained and it operates just fine now. It needs to be replaced. And if it takes a year or two longer, it won't hinder current operations or affect patient safety or, or care in any way. As Sam indicated, we'll certainly get it done as soon as possible. But there, there certainly are a number of steps from an environmental standpoint that we, that we have to go through. And I, as I look at this overhead, it's probably unfortunate that we use the term recommended projects. I think really what it was intended to convey is the top four projects are really bundled together because they all relate to one another. It doesn't mean that we're just recommending those four.
No, and I, and I, and I fully understand that we have the, the most excellent. No, and I, and I, and I fully understand that we have the, the most excellent care at Cordillares, but it was just, I think the new design is so exciting that I just hate to have the patients have to wait longer than.
Right, and I, I'd like to make corrections here because, uh, there were two different, uh, uh, schedules that we have internally discussed. What I told you about is more of a conventional, traditional, very conservative, we're waiting everything until the CEQA, we got the NACTAC and the EIR approved. Actually, what we presented here on the board is that, uh, while we were doing the CEQA, we're also trying to head up, uh, the design phase. So it, it was kind of a parallel process. As you can tell, by 2020, we'll be finished the Cordillares. Yeah, if that's, uh, that's already reflected on, on this forecast here.
So, I know you wanna have a question.
Thank you, Sam.
So essentially, what you're, what we're looking for here is direction to the PDU that these are projects that we want, essentially, see, we do want COB three, we do want the, uh, the, uh, the master plan at the hospital. That's essentially it. Okay. Supervisor Pine?
It would be, it would be great if, um, you could give us that timeline, maybe in some kind of a graphical form, because, you know, as, by my count, there's, there are seven projects in the PDU, PDU unit, and there's, I guess, two, not counting, facility maintenance and the DPW, that's nine. Then there's eight of these park projects, which, little bit of a different animal, but kind of nice to kind of see them, like when they start. I mean, I know it'll all be an estimate because some things are subject to permitting or, but I think this desire of knowing how they, how they are sequenced would, kind of to see it kind of visually would be great.
Sure, would be. Should, uh, would you recommend that we make a motion basically approving these, essentially these projects? Is the recommendation of the, the San Mateo County Medical Center Master Plan and the COB three, the mid-sized version?
Yes, I, I would give direction on those four projects to proceed. We'll come back, uh, with the, the final capital program in the budget with the exact financing and the other details that relate to those.
And sequencing.
And, and sequence, we have a per chart for each of those so that you could see the various construction phrases.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I had a couple more questions if I could.
Okay, you've got a couple more.
It is, you know, it is hundreds of millions of dollars.
No, you're right, it's a lot of, it's a lot of decision-making.
So in no particular order. You know, a long time ago, there, an idea was floated and I, and, uh, when we did the COB three, you know, maybe we could put some commercial space or kind of, uh, private space in there. Like you look at the Metro Center, seems like that's worked out really well. Where, in, in downtown San Francisco. So I know the plan doesn't contemplate that, so I'd be just interested in what your thought process was on, on not including that, that idea. And another thing that had come up, uh, to the county manager, maybe this is still an open issue, is that, you know, there are other government agencies that might have interest in being in a, there was some, some speculation or preliminary talk about other government agencies particularly using a, for lack of better word, better word, COB three.
So.
That's correct.
There's, so there's, there are two other kind of big ideas, and I take it those are off the table now?
That's correct. We, we have had a lot of discussions with, um, uh, one of the potential partners that might be interested in the project, and they've determined that, that for a variety of reasons, they didn't think that they could make a commitment to go forward. And as it relates to building a building with potential additional space, there are some limitations if we finance the building with public, uh, financing as to how much you could build in addition to space that you will occupy yourself.
So do you, do you think that concept of, um, you know, looking at, the thought, you know, two years ago was, wasn't really clear how big COB three should be. If you made it a little, it might, you might big it, it might build it bigger and, and then lease it and see how things develop over the next ten years. So is that something that you kind of ruled out? Or do you think that's worthy of any further thought?
Our recommendation is to proceed with the mid-size and recognize that we do have additional flexibility in the space in this building that we continue to own. So if we're looking at it from the county standpoint, building a building this size would either leave some additional space that could be rented by the private sector and COB three, uh, or the county would have some additional capacity in this building for, um, either rental or for reserving for future county functions. So if you look at the total space in the mid-size of COB three and the space that would remain available in here, we think there is enough space that you could accommodate, uh, in the near term, uh, other, other interests. And then it would just be a determination of how you wanted to, to, uh, facilitate the, the movement of those interests between the two buildings.
Okay.
The, the other thing with the, the mid-size COB three would be that we wouldn't be utilizing the whole site right now. And for the future, down the line, if we ever felt that we needed more space there or we wanted to build, uh, an adjacent building to that, we'd be able to add on to it.
Supervisor Groom?
Uh, when, when, when you give us additional information, can you kind of give us a chart that shows how much, how many people COB three would hold?
Yeah.
In various sizes?
Sure, we have that, we'll get that.
And what happens to the two existing buildings? I mean, are, I know we have been wanting, will they, will they stay the same? Will they be renovated in some manner? Some have been.
Four, five, five and, and five hundred?
Yeah.
Uh, it would be, and I'll, I'll let the project team talk about this. As you know, there's ongoing renovations in four, five, five anyhow, and it's, um, I believe the plan would be to, to renovate that. Five hundred is in pretty good shape, so, but I'll let the project team talk about that.
Right, that's exactly right. Um, we are still renovating some floors of the, of the four, five, five, uh, building, so.
And how many employees will, 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 when the renovations are complete, will that hold? And how many employees does the other building hold? I mean, because I'm now wondering about the size of the parking garage.
Yeah.
We don't have those, uh, those numbers exactly available. Um, the parking garage, uh, when we do, um, come back for, um, approval on that structure itself, we will have that narrowly defined how many parking spaces that, that, that we have there. And that'll depend on, again, um, the, the partnerships that have come forward to see if they're, if those are solidified and they really want those spaces or not. But we'll come back with an exact number that's been fully vetted.
Alright, thank you.
Before we make a motion on the, let me have this, uh, one, uh, public comment, Kristen Anderson?
Gonna ask about childcare?
I know.
Hi, I'm Kristen Anderson, and I'm here today representing the County Childcare Partnership Council that is co-chaired by Supervisor Pine and Superintendent Anne Campbell. As you probably know, it's a legally a commission of the county, um, under both the county and the Board of Education. We are, uh, this past year, the Human Service Agency funded us, child, countywide childcare facilities needs assessment, and I've brought copies today of an executive, uh, summary of that study that was presented to the First Five Commission just a few weeks ago. And I know some of you have, uh, heard that presentation. This was a, a year-long study that included new, uh, childcare and early learning supply gap analysis countywide and for each of the cities. And, uh, surveys looking for additional space because one of the major barriers to, uh, increasing the capacity of childcare and early learning programs is the lack of facility space, which has become even more difficult with the housing shortage and the, the, the needs in that area. So, um, I would like to request today that you consider with any of these sites, if there's any way to accommodate facility space for childcare. The, the county employee childcare center on this campus, when I spoke to them last spring, there were five hundred children on the waiting list for ninety-six spaces. So there is a big demand. I know Redwood, Redwood City is also working on this issue. There's a site a couple of blocks from here, the Bradford Street Affordable Housing Project that will include some space for childcare. But our collaborative in the county with the Partnership Council, First Five, and, um, other entities is be, starting to go out to cities and make presentations, asking also that they look at potential reuse of buildings, um, including space in, in new buildings that they build or looking at vacant land. We're also approaching school districts and churches.
Could you summarize that, please?
So I, again, I'd just like you to consider, um, whether it's, might be feasible, um, to include space for early learning and care facilities in any of these projects.
Supervisor Pine, you have some other questions you wanted to ask?
Yeah, thank you. You know, obviously, we all know about how difficult, uh, this is for the team, so thank you for your comments, um, Kristen. So, yeah, it's no, no secret that parking is terrible currently. And with, with more building, we're gonna have, uh, more people and presumably more cars. But I'd be interested in, you know, when you provide additional information, you know, see some of the backup as to the, behind the numbers of, of spaces. They, they cost about fifty thousand dollars each to build the parking space. And, um, like when you look at like what Stanford's doing, for example, you know, they've been growing that campus considerably for ten or fifteen, twenty years. And their, their actual number of trips by employees and cars has stayed the same or may have gone down. And I believe with their new buildings, they're not gonna put in any parking. So I'm not, you know, I don't know exactly how they do that, but they're really good at it. They, they have a person there that works on this full-time about trip reduction. So you think about the amount of money you spend on parking and, you know, it's worth thinking about whether there are other, you know, whether there are ways to reduce car trips. So that's just something I'd ask you to think about.
Through the President, Supervisor Pine, that's absolutely well-taken, yes. It's something that, uh, we really wanna get the right number. We don't wanna overbuild this, uh, this parking structure based on the, uh, the cost per parking space in that structure.
Yeah, and when you think a little further out, you know, I was meeting with SPUR recently and, you know, with the, with the self-piloted automated vehicles, you know, they foresee a world where parking is really gonna be diminished, though I don't know how far you can plan, but anyway, it, it's more complicated now than it used to be when you think about parking.
Absolutely, it's a real balance.
Through the President, just to address Supervisor Pine's question quickly. One of the complicating factors on this campus relating to parking is that a good deal of demand is from the courts. And obviously, that's something we don't have a control over, and to significant extent, either does the court. But that does generate a lot of the parking demand on this campus.
Yeah, I hadn't, that's a good, that's a good point. So just quickly wrapping up here. The team has heard me say this before, but is, you know, you know, very keen on, you know, energy efficiency and, you know, if this was 2020 right now, you know, it's 2017, but if it were 2020, we'd be required by law to build these buildings to be, uh, zero net, net energy. So we don't, you know, we're gonna build this stuff, some of it, before then. But, um, you know, I'm still curious to, I, I, as I brought up a couple of times, I, you know, I'd like to, to see some costs estimates of what, what that would take. And just for the, everyone's benefit, you know, the Office of Sustainability, you know, met with the planning team towards the end of last year to talk about zero net energy. And they offered to bring in a bunch, bring in some experts, like for example, this Atherton Civic Center is gonna be zero net energy. And so a number of people are really good at this. And the tricky thing is, is, you know, you have to integrate it into the planning really early. Otherwise, you just toss it out, it's too expensive. And then you also have to look at the lifetime cost of the building. And so there was seemed to be a, a great interest among the planning team to work with Office of Sustainability to just kind of kick, kick those ideas around. So I really think it's important that we do that. You know, I don't know where it will come out. I, I hope it would come out where we would, uh, be able to do zero net energy. Because again, if it were 2020, we wouldn't even have a choice.
Right.
So it's just another thing that I, I hope, uh, because, you know, what's remarkable about this situation is, you know, as pointed out, that we got a couple of buildings built in nineteen fifty-four. So you only get, so it's, you know, I just hope we really, I, I just like us to really look hard at some of these questions because it's, it's a really, it's such a unique generational opportunity.
Absolutely, and as we bring all these projects back to you individually, if, if you give us direction to go forward on all of them, and that's what we're looking for, direction to go forward on, on all seven of them, we will address those individually for each project for you.
Okay. So I'm going to push forward on, is there, do we want to make a motion to give them direction? I, I suspect you do.
Make a motion to, um, give them direction?
To?
So.
The?
So staff's recommendation, right? The recommendations and direction. Um, so is it?
The new master plan for the hospital?
You have the master plan?
COB three.
Here, it's right here. So you have the master, you have the, the San Mateo County Medical Center, the County of Office Building, the Government Center parking structure, and the relocation of Lethrop House. Did I miss anything?
No. You got it.
Thank you. Motion's on the table, yep.
Great. Is there a second? Second? Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, I know we have a, uh, hard stop at four o'clock, so I'm gonna take things a little about order right now, and I'm gonna ask the, uh, Sheriff's Office to come up and give their presentation. I think we can do that in short, short order.
Okay. Good afternoon, President Horsley, members of the board, Mr. Maupi, Mr. Byers, Mr. Sacco. I'm here to talk about the renovation of the Old McGuire Jail located at three thirty Bradford Street in Redwood City. This project would convert Old McGuire into a Sheriff's Office Headquarters building, allowing us to house together Sheriff's Administration, Operations, and Support Services. The project's scope includes five floors and fifty-three thousand square feet of office space. The estimated budget is thirty-five million, twelve million of which I'm, uh, willing to commit from Sheriff's Office reserves and future budget savings. The anticipated project completion timeline is thirty-seven months. This project will benefit the public we serve by providing enhanced access to Sheriff's Office transactions with the public, streamlining operations, and improving administrative efficiencies. This project will also benefit the Sheriff's Office employees by establishing a coalition of services and personnel and improving processes and work environments. In addition, this project will free up approximately forty thousand square feet of off, of space for county use. Through the President, I want to answer Supervisor, uh, one of his previous questions, which is, we will vacate the entire Hall of Justice, but we must maintain a small space on the fourth floor for court security and transportation. We're excited to have the Old McGuire renovation project be considered by the Honorable Board as part of the county's feasibility studies and master plans. Thank you, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Supervisor Slocum? Supervisor Groom? Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. Uh, it says fifty-three thousand square feet in the new facility. What's the size of the square footage upstairs? Is it forty thousand?
Forty thousand, that's correct. Approximately.
Thank you.
Other questions?
And just to, just to clarify, the, the slide says eight million in Sheriff's reserves, but you said twelve million, right?
That's correct. Eight million in Sheriff's reserves, and I'm willing to commit
Oh, I see.
From future savings.
I see, thank you.
Okay. I, I want a motion to approve that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, Old McGuire renovation.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Can we do DPW now?
I've been assured that, uh,
You can do it fifteen minutes.
Director Porter could get through this in ten minutes, so.
Okay.
Take it or what?
And then we have five minutes for parks.
Or less. Thank you, President Horsley. I want to talk a bit about the capital projects that DPW will be completing, and those are really maintenance-type projects. We had more projects submitted than we had, um, funding for them, so we were, um, prioritizing projects based upon what you see there. Health, safety, and regulatory projects were number one. Capital preservation, which is basically maintaining the structures we have, are number two. And third was energy conservation-type projects. And third was energy conservation-type projects. A little bit about what we maintain, we've got about 3 million square feet of office space here in the county, both office correctional space as well as health system space. We've achieved significant greenhouse reductions over the past five years, and we're going to continue doing that. We've made strides to working with Peninsula Clean Energy to opt into their 100% clean energy program, which will occur this fiscal year. And we're working with the Parks Department on their projects as we move forward. Some of the larger projects we're going to be working on are located on the map there. The Coastside Clinic was recently purchased by the Board. There are some renovations that need to occur within that building. We will be working on that. Sheriff Bolanos pointed out the McGuire Jail project. At the Redwood City Courthouse, there are some modifications to the exterior skin that need to be completed for maintenance purposes. At the San Mateo Medical Center, we're constantly doing projects in there to both work with the hospital to provide patient care as well as maintain the structure in accordance with OSHPOD requirements. Alpine Road Trail Project, you're very familiar with that.
Yes, sir.
And the Fair Oaks Library Project, we're working with HSA in the library system to modify that space. Whoops. Whoops. Pick me back up quick. Ah, look at that. All right. In terms of safety, health, and regulatory projects, we'll be retrofitting the portable water tank at the medical center. That's that old concrete tank on the right. It really needs to be replaced. We'll be doing a Serenity House remodel. That's the picture on the lower right. It looks like a residential house to blend in with the neighborhood. And also, we'll be redoing Marata Road. The reason why that's a health project is there's a sewer line in there that we need to protect. As well as working with the Parks Department on their wastewater treatment plant project and replacing the fire alarm system at the medical center. We're also working on the library. I mentioned the library, and you've got a picture of the courthouse there as well. We'll be replacing the expansion joints at the medical center. And we're also doing a feasibility study at the East Palo Alto Government Center. That is a building that is in deep need of renovation. So we're going to first take a comprehensive look at that and then come to you with a series of projects. In terms of energy conservation work, we're working on a countywide interior lighting upgrade, which will save us quite a bit of energy. In the Hall of Justice, we're replacing the air handling units. And at the Childcare Center, we're just working on the air handling units there as well. In terms of the projects themselves and the funding, for the general fund major capital, we will be allocated $20 million for the next fiscal year and $10 million thereafter. You also see other projects that are funded by Measure K that will be worked on either by Parks and the Department of Public Works to complete. Unfortunately, some projects were not able to make the funding list, and these are those projects. So there are several fairly large projects, but they did not meet the criteria that would have elevated them into the capital program. If there's a desire to complete some of these projects, we will take in that input, and then we'll go back into the capital program, and we'll delete other projects to make up the revenue to add in the projects that you choose to add to it. So with that, I will conclude my presentation.
I'd like to also add on that last slide that if there's available funding at the end of, as we close the books for the fiscal year, we may be able to fund some of these projects as well. Again, we, when we looked at the major capital projects and how much money we thought we had for the next two years in terms of general reserves while still maintaining the 10% reserve level, we set the number, and so these number, these projects fell out of the loop and aren't, there isn't available funding for them. But, you know, year end after we close the books, there probably will be, and we can take another look at these projects.
Okay.
Ask a question, though?
Yes.
How, is the replacement of the nursing call system, is the nursing call system in poor condition? Is it, is it something that would, if it's fixed, it'd enhance patient safety?
Through the President, we felt that that system had at least two more years of life on it, so that's why it got moved out. There were the more high priority projects that we needed to complete.
Two years of life?
Yeah, it's got at least two years of life into, so we'll look at it at the next capital program.
Thanks.
I do want one question. On the Parks, we didn't include the Eastern Promenade. Shouldn't that be on the list, too?
Actually, I will defer to the Parks Director to, there's actually another presentation on Parks that covers their projects, but.
So let's, before you get up, Sarah, let's take that, the approval of your, the DPW's capital.
What?
Yes. Go ahead, yes. Supervisor Slocum. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was curious, and maybe Ms. Jensen has to answer this, but I'm curious to know when the North Fair Oaks Library remodel will be completed.
I don't have a schedule, but we can report back to you on that.
Thank you.
And I had a question on Alpine Road. The, or it's, we were doing the live log crib wall, and it's actually collapsed a little further, I guess, west, no, east of it. And there's also an extension that was really, a long time ago, it used to be, it's a dirt road, basically.
Yes, the dirt section.
Yeah, in fact, we were trying to get, give that to Mid Peninsula Open Space District, but they've never been willing to take it.
So that's
Are we still working on that?
We were working with Mid Peninsula Open Space to take that portion of the road. Part of the agreement was that we repair a certain segment where there was a bit of erosion.
Right.
Unfortunately, with the winter storms, that erosion became substantially worse, and in fact, washed out the entire section of the trail.
So it's no longer a bike trail, a mountain bike trail then?
There is alternate access, but right now, it's not as optimal as we'd like. So we're talking with Mid Pen about what an agreement could be to be able to transfer that responsibility.
Is that part of what we sent into OES is for potential, you know, fee of money if?
Yes, we included Alpine Road. I'll get some more details on that segment. The funding that we get for the emergency work that DPW was concentrating on was roadway, but we did include that in because that's still part of the Alpine Roadway system.
So now for DPW, again, are we asking for a motion to approve their work plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the DPW highlighted projects.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I still have a question. Do that. I'm sorry. The Parks Director was about to answer.
So I was going to ask President Horsley, if you just wanted the Parks Director to go ahead and give her presentation within five minutes.
Well, actually, I've been told by Supervisor Grub that we have a little bit more time than we have, about 10 minutes after four. So the Parks Director is welcome to take her time.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board members. Let me get my slide up. So the Parks Department is seeking funding for three primary categories of projects and activities, and the first are those core parks functions that are ongoing, that are needed to keep our parks open and safe and thriving and environmentally resilient. The second category are those projects for which we've done some level of planning and or their, and design, and those include infrastructure as well as some parks improvement projects. And then the final category, the focus was on new infrastructure projects that are priority needs. This is just a list of some of those core departmental functions that are ongoing, such as maintenance, road and trail maintenance, hazard tree removal and trimming, fire fuel reduction, et cetera. Jim mentioned the Memorial Wastewater Plant Replacement Project, and we've got $3.8 million appropriated for that project. We're seeking an additional $1 million to replace and repair sewer lines, which are primarily old terracotta lines in four-foot sections, and we're having a lot of trouble keeping those lines functional, especially during the busy camping season. They require staff time two to three times a week to rod and clear blockages from roots. And we also have had a lot of groundwater inundation in those pipes this last year. The other major project we are now budgeting for is Old Hall Road Repair, which I mentioned to you two weeks ago. This is damaged from the storms this winter and includes a landslide and at least two of the crib log crossings where we've got major sinkholes opening up, and you can see one on the left there. Our existing projects for which we're seeking Measure K or general fund monies include Memorial Park, the Flood Park Project, and the $2 million there is for the first phase, and that would be mostly focused on the ball fields and then some infrastructure at the park. Crystal Springs Trail, that's the section that's going to be south of the dam project that DPW is currently working on. Green Valley Trail, we are close to completing plans and specifications for that. And then Wonderlic Hay Barn, we have some money for that and need some additional funds to complete that project. And I do note, Supervisor Pine, you mentioned, Eastern Promenade Project is no longer shown here for budget purposes. We, it had to fall off the list mostly because of the Old Hall Road damage that we need to address. So that's being deferred.
May I ask a question about that? Maybe to the county manager? So, you know, with all the storms occurring, I'd asked a question a couple of prior meetings about, you know, there's unexpected damages that have occurred. And it was my understanding that we would repair those, you know, I remember saying that's, well, it's a good thing we have reserves because these were unexpected. So I'm a little surprised to see that, you know, we would put Measure K against, you know, we need to fix the Old Hall Road Repair, but that was, that was kind of an emergency due to the flooding and the winter. So, you know, why wouldn't we use reserves for that and use the Measure K against the Promenade?
The issue becomes, do we want to drop below the 10% board policy on reserves at the end of the year? We're getting close to that. And so if we continue to use reserves for these one-time projects, then we'll have to drop below its board policy. Not something necessarily I would recommend, but it's something we could do. Keep in mind that we are hopeful that we will, in the long run, but it takes several years, to be reimbursed for the costs of some of these public projects. And then once that reimbursement comes, we could put it in place for the Promenade or other higher priority projects at that time.
Okay, yeah, because I hadn't previously heard that we were starting to bump up against our reserve limit, you know, maybe offline, I'd like to maybe understand how close we are.
Okay. Supervisor Grub?
Aren't we, aren't we also looking, applying for grants for the Coyote Point Promenade?
Yes, and we've raised about 1.3 million to date in grant monies for that project. I'll add that we are also going to seek grant money for Old Hall Road Repair because that is a major source of sediment to Pascadero Creek, and it's possible that we may be able to obtain some money to treat some of those sediment sources.
So we may be able to balance this a little bit?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we'll do everything we can, both to bring the cost down for Old Hall Road and also seek outside monies to help pay for the repairs.
Thank you.
But you'd allocated a certain amount of K, Measure K for the Promenade, like three or four million, or?
Yeah, we had identified a need for $3.2 million in Measure K monies for
Right, so the proposal is not to spend that K money?
Is to defer, yeah, yeah, defer a request for Eastern Promenade at this time.
Any other questions? I just had one question.
It's not ideal, but.
It is. The Memorial Park wastewater and portable water system, the 1 million is in, not the coming fiscal year, but the year after. Is that because of?
Timing, likely timing for the plans. We've got a consultant now working on it, so yeah, that's, it's going to be a little ways out before we actually get to building that.
Okay, thanks. So is there a motion to approve the Parks recommended budget needs for new projects? Supervisor Canap, do you want to make that? Second? Don't all say it at once.
I do have one additional slide.
Good catch, Warren. I was trying to get finished.
I liked where this was going, so I didn't want to interrupt it, but this
Well, you almost got it, so go ahead.
These are new budget requests, and they are, so, and by new, I mean, these are new projects. These are not projects that were previously identified or had some money allocated to them. So these are almost all in high priority infrastructure needs, with the exception of a few, and those are the Sam McDonald Visitor Center and Interpretive Center and the house repairs. And also, we are in dire need of refurbishing and restoring the ranger station at Memorial Park, as well as providing ADA access there and ADA restroom. Most of those on that list you see there, though, are high priority infrastructure needs, such as paving and water line repair.
Is that your last slide?
That's my last slide, I think.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
And just to, just to add to that, that 3 million a year would come out of the 80 million a year we receive from Measure K. Okay. So. All right. So do we, again?
Well, I guess, I guess we're all reluctant, Supervisor Horsley, because we really, you know, several of us really want to see the Promenade finished.
Yeah.
And so I understand that, you know, you've got stress and water damage and storm damage, but if we, if we look at all these new projects, then we kind of figure that the East Promenade will never get done.
Well, it's currently been deprioritized.
Yeah.
Could you put that slide back up? Yeah, I mean, maybe we, maybe there's, you could, maybe the team could try to find a way to get that.
Especially, especially if you, if, I mean, I know you've, I know you have really talented grant writer, and she's been very successful, but if we don't get additional money, then we're kind of stuck in the middle of nowhere.
How much additional money do you need?
It's $3.2 million. That's one of the problems, is it's such a large sum. It really, it would displace quite a bit of what we consider to be pretty critical infrastructure needs. I think some of those smaller projects could potentially be deferred further out, but that's still not going to give us the room to add the $3.2 million.
Well, yeah, or when we have our Measure K discussion at the end of April, it's one-time money. I mean, some portion of that could come out of K. I mean, a lot of people, there's a lot of demand for K.
Yeah.
And then let's just hypothetically say it's 1.5. And then, you know, you know, maybe there is a little money left in the reserve. Maybe we're not really at the total 10%. I think it would be warranted to try to get creative on that.
There's also some, although it's decreasing, Measure K reserves also. But I would agree with Sarah, as I look at this list, I mean, these are repairs, we've got to maintain what we have now before we undertake something new. I mean, it would be crazy not to do that.
I don't disagree, but the Promenade's not new. I mean, we've been working on the Promenade for several years.
That's true, but it's, it's not like the roof's going to fall in if we don't do it tomorrow.
That's, that is true. That is true.
But could we, could we give directions just to be, try to be creative about finding some effort, some funds on that? Improve what's here.
Can we, can we do that when we actually talk about Measure K in the future? So for now, let's, so we make a recommendation, or I'm going to recommend that we make a recommendation to approve the new project budget for Parks? So.
There's a motion on the table, right?
So you made the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we'll come back to the Promenade later. So I don't think we would have time.
I was going to say, President Horsley, I think this is a good place to stop, and then we'll reschedule the update on Millfield Junction and the IT proposal.
Thanks very much.
I just want to apologize. Today happens to be the celebration of the High School and High School Teacher STEM Awards that the county cosponsors with the office event, and a couple of us have got to go.
Yes, and I apologize for rushing it through, but I knew you had to go, so, thanks.
Thanks for all the great work.
Thanks for the presentations.